Okay, folks. I recall the meeting to order. Members of the public advise that our meetings are webcast live by the City of Hamilton, temporarily archived on the city's website. Other individuals in the media may also be audibly and/or visually recording this meeting, as well a reminder electronic devices to be switched to an inaudible function. Madam Clerk, changes to the agenda?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Yes, for item 5.3, which is Report FCS 18097, the 2019 tax-supported capital budget, you have before you a revised Appendix C on yellow. So when you consider the report, please look at that. As a result of the revised Appendix C, subsection D to that report will also need to be amended by deleting the dollar amount of $2,742.90 and replacing it with the dollar amount $2,892,490.
Thank you. So a motion to approve the agenda as presented, moved by Counselor Pearson and seconded by Counselor Partridge. All in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none. Any declarations of interest today? Seeing none. A motion to receive item 4.1. That's moved by Counselor Collins, seconded by Counselor Pauls. All in favor. Carry on to presentations, and I'll ask Mike Zegarik if we do have Mr. House in the House yet. I know you had suggested a few minutes ago that he was stuck in traffic.
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. He hasn't arrived yet, so we have a few options. I could start with the budget overview, or we could go over the timeline just to see whether or not we can discuss the budget timeline in the hope that he arrives in a few minutes. So a few options. We could start with the budget overview or discuss the budget timelines.
We start with the overview.
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I understand he's in the parking lot, so...
So would the timelines be faster than the overview?
Sure.
Why don't we do that, then?
So, just why don't I... We can start with just checking in where we are yesterday. Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Yesterday, committee received and deliberated on the rate-supported budget. Today, you have a consent item, as well as the three presentations before you. The three presentations is a bit of context setting from Mr. House, as well as our operating budget overview and our capital budget presentation. Similar to the rate budget, there is a tentative date for the capital budget deliberations for next Friday, and the schedule has us bringing the capital budget to our December council meeting. Recognizing that in previous years, immediately after an election, the capital budget has been deferred to January for further information. So I'll just point that out as that is an option. If that's an option, that staff or that committee would like staff to pursue, is we will work with clerks to see the calendar. Stephanie, I know, is smiling because I know we have a very busy January calendar. But I'm just recognizing the fact that in previous years, given the scope of the tax-supported capital budget, is there's been a desire from previous councils to defer it to January. So again, as it stands, it is presented as part of today's presentations. It's available next week. Staff are available next week. If there are any follow-up questions, that we are prepared to provide that information. And if required, we could look at potential dates in January. And I'm not sure if I've danced or dragged long enough for Mr. House to arrive, but if there are any questions with respect to the process, be happy to answer them.
Mayor Fred Eisenberger.
So do we need a motion to do that for January? I think it'd be appropriate, given the new members and probably requiring some additional time for everybody to get up to speed. I think it's a good idea. So you need a motion to do that? Set it aside until January?
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I would suggest so because council has approved the schedule. So if the motion is for staff to review the calendar and amend it such that the capital budget has, or that there be a capital budget GIC in January, and that it be referred to a January council meeting, I will ask that we consider approving it in January. While we do have policies that allow continuity of business, allow city staff to procure services in the new year, by deferring it further into the new year could create some challenges as it relates to program delivery.
I agree. So traditionally, we've passed it, you know, in December, and I think there's lots of time to go through that in normal years, but this year, I think, is exceptional. So whatever the motion needs to be to set a, you know, kind of final meeting date in January, I think would be helpful.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Because it's not a regular standing committee, I don't need a motion to add an additional meeting, so I'll just go ahead and...
All right. I think that's great. I think that'll be helpful for certainly the new members, and certainly wouldn't hurt the existing members either. So unless, other than, you know, anything that has to be passed because of some of the moves that have to be put in place to get the project going, so, but I think January will work just fine. Thanks.
Counselor Ferguson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too agree that we should take the capital budget into January. I only got my book about three days ago, and of course, the detailed book is about two and a half inches thick, and we got the summary book, which I brought with me today. And I like to really go over that because that's the 10-year capital plan, and we got to get that right. And so I'd like to take the holidays to really carefully go through it and highlight the issues that I may have, and I'm sure other member of council will do the same. So regardless of what happens today with the capital budget, and, you know, whether we go again next week doesn't matter to me. Once again, it depends where we get through today. Next week doesn't matter because I need more time in that over the holidays, you're on an airplane to somewhere, to be able to spend three or four hours pouring through it with a highlighter, and then back in January. Thanks.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes, I'd like to reiterate that. I need more time. I need to understand the consequences of this, and I would appreciate it being pushed to January. Thank you.
Looks like that's where we're heading. Acting City Manager Mike Zegarik.
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Will work with clerks towards that. I will also identify that council has not formally received the police services capital budget for 2019 to '22, so by deferring it to January allows council to formally receive that budget and reflect it in our new year deliberations.
Great. Are there any among us who wish to pass the capital budget this morning? Brenda? Counselor Ferguson, once more.
I just wanted to add on the capital budget. Police approved it at the November meeting, our 10-year capital budget. So that is available. They'll be sending it to you shortly, Mike, and you should be able to get it distributed to council.
Very good.
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. We have received it. City staff have received it. Just procedurally, we just require that council receive the budget so that you can consider the police services capital request as part of their global request.
Brenda Fung. So I can't speak any slower. Why don't you tell us who Mr. House is, acting manager, as we await his arrival? I haven't seen anybody come through. So why don't you, you can pretend you're Mr. House for now. And this is item 5.1. This is the economic update. Yeah. Some parking lots are more confusing than others.
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Brett House is the Vice President and Deputy Chief Economist with Scotiabank. He's not necessarily new to our chamber rooms. Some of you may recall that he was one of our panelists at the Hamilton Summit. Brett is going to provide you a bit of an overview, some geopolitical context and global context in terms of where the global economy is and where it's headed. He'll bring it down to the North American economy. There's a lot of interest with respect to U.S. MCA and tariffs and the impact that has on a number of our manufacturers in the manufacturing sector. And then he'll bring a little further down into housing and where the housing market is headed, and some of the economic factors that are going to drive the housing market, as well as the City of Hamilton housing market. So let me just, Brett has an extensive bio, and I won't go through it all. And if I was multilingual, I'd go through it in many languages for you. But previously, Brett was a chief economist at Alignvent Investment Management in Toronto, global strategist at Woodbine Capital Advisors in New York. And earlier in his career, Brett served as Principal Advisor to the United Nations Secretary General, and as an economist to the International Monetary Fund. And if you're not impressed with that, he cut his teeth in fixed income markets at Goldman Sachs in London and the World Bank in Washington, D.C. Brett is a world scholar with degrees in economics from University of Oxford in Queens. Going further, he's held teaching and research roles at Oxford, Columbia, McGill, and Massey College. And I'm just thankful my mother isn't here to hear me read that because it would confirm her disappointment in me after hearing me read that bio. So...
What's your bio?
Up to this date, I've been...
Churchill High School. I know that much.
So...
It's not helping you turning around like that?
No.
So may I ask then, as chair's still stretching, Mike, why is it important at this particular juncture in the start of our budget process to bring such an important...
So I think timing is of interest for anyone who has been fixated to some of the geopolitical factors affecting the news recently. We've heard of factors around trade, factors around global relationships, and how that is impacting the flow of goods and movements. For anyone who is focused on the market, you would have seen a adjustment in the market earlier this week, and so that's of interest. I know there's a number of people who are interested in terms of whether or not there are signs of a recession, and I think Brett's going to provide some context in terms of declining growth versus a recession. So I think it provides some context in terms of what we should expect as it relates to our sectors. Our advanced manufacturing is one of the sectors that we are focused on as it relates to growth, as well as housing. We're very dependent on our housing markets. So I'm hoping that Brett's presentation today will provide some of that context leading into our deliberations, because you'll see later today on our capital budget, especially our focus on development and our focus on economic prosperity, and that represents opportunities for us, but it also represents some risks as it relates to how we plan for that development and what our financial obligations are as it relates to servicing that development. So again, I think that'll provide some context as we lead into our capital budget deliberations, as well as our operating budget deliberations. And I believe Brett is making a grand entrance. I'll invite Brett down to the podium here. I've danced for as long as possible.
We already went over your extensive bio, but Mike failed to recognize which high school you went to. So if you could just share that and then get right on with the report. Brett, welcome back to council chambers.
So welcome, Brett, and we have your presentation voted. Well, thank you for having me again. Apologies for the delayed arrival. Much of what I'm going to talk about today is a relatively positive story about where we see economic growth going over the next couple of years in Canada and in Ontario, in southern Ontario specifically. So maybe that delay on the highway is entirely consistent with that in terms of a lot of activity happening in this region. Let's move to... Is this on the full view? So it is a great pleasure to be back, and as you mentioned, I did go to high school in Beamsville nearby here. So I'm a proud Beamsville buck, which is something people won't be able to say for too much longer because with consolidation in the Niagara District School Board, Beamsville is closing. But one of the things I am proud of doing with my hometown recently is ensuring that the main building at Beamsville is a designated heritage site. We, over the last few years, brought in the first full heritage process for the town of Lincoln. It, like many municipalities, did not have one consistent with the Ontario Heritage Act, and the high school is one of the first buildings that has been designated under that move. So I'll just give you a little bit of a sense of the things I'm going to highlight very quickly today, and this will be a very quick skim through some ideas that I'd invite you to go into deeper reflection on with some of the reports that we have at our website that are publicly available and that we can provide to you. But there are a few headlines, I guess, that I want to put out right up front. And the first is that the headlines you are reading, I think, are inconsistent in many ways with the numbers that we look at as we try to parse where things are going and what is happening in the underlying Canadian, U.S., and global economic spheres. When we look at Canada and the U.S., we see a lot of pundits saying, you know, we have a recession looming ahead. And I think that is a major conflation of a slowing in economic growth that we are undergoing, which is a very different thing from saying we're going into a recession. A recession technically, in very narrow terms, refers to two quarters of negative growth that occur in succession of one another. We are projecting growth slowing only from about 2.1% this year to around 1.9% next year in Canada as a whole, and around 1.8% in 2020. That is hardly a recession. And I think in some ways, the headlines are a reflection, you know, of a notion that people want to understand things in terms of extremes when we try to understand broad-brust changes going on. Speaking about nuances harder than speaking about really big changes. And unfortunately, here, we have relatively small changes going on in Canada after a really strong year of growth last year. We are expecting growth to be more or less middling, somewhere just around 2% or a little south of that. And that's consistent with what we in the Bank of Canada estimate is the underlying potential growth rate of the Canadian economy, given the amount of infrastructure, capacity, human capital, and technology that we have in place right now. In fact, that rate of growth is consistent in many ways with the traffic jam I experienced today, where demand in Canada is actually running higher than the supply of goods and services that we're able to produce right now. And you will see as a result, the Bank of Canada, despite a relatively dovish statement that we had from the governor on Wednesday, continuing to raise interest rates over the next few years. And we should take that as pretty much a given because for all the bad news that we've had from stock markets, you know, and some other aspects of the economy over the last few weeks, we just got a very strong trade and growth data set out today from Canada and the United States, which implies that, you know, the messages we hear from our clients, which is that they're having trouble hiring people, they have strong labor shortages, both in Quebec, in Ontario, in British Columbia, and that they have never seen a situation where they have to bid up wages quite as much as they do in order to fill their vacancies, is something that's actually being reflected in the numbers that we get more broadly. I'm going to distill it down a bit for Ontario and Hamilton, and then look at some of the trade developments that are the major threat to the outlook. And there's something we discussed during the Steel Summit here, too. My favorite chart of the moment is this one, and I want to explain it just a little bit because it, to me, is one of the major reasons why I think talk of a looming recession rather than a looming marginal slowdown is a bit misplaced. So this describes 93% of the world's economy. Each vertical bar is a count of the 35 industrialized countries in the world and the 10 largest emerging markets that share and coordinate with the OECD, the Organization for Cooperation Development, which is sometimes known colloquially as the Rich Countries Club. So the dark blue in each one of these bars is the count of countries that is growing more quickly than the previous year. The light blue are countries that are growing positively but more slowly than the previous year, and red are countries in recession. So I want to point out just a few things I think are really salient here. If you look at the years from 2004 to '08, right before the global financial crisis, we had an exceptional circumstance, which if I took this data series back to the 1960s, you would have seen only one other occasion where there is no red in those four columns. There were no countries in recession at that point. We had another year like that in 2017, and right now, 2018, '19, and '20, on the far-right-hand side of the chart here, we have three countries where, three years, I should say, where we are not anticipating any substantial move by 93% of the world's economy into recession. There is slowing, as you see with that expansion in the light blue part of the bars. More countries are slowing down in terms of their growth rates, but we don't see them moving into recession situations. And so for a resource-based economy, which Canada still remains in large part, that's a pretty good sign that there is going to be sustained demand for the raw materials and other finished goods that we produce. It's been remarked by some that this is one of the most unloved log-running expansions that North America has seen. The red bar here refers to a count of the number of months that the recovery from the global financial crisis has gone on. And if this continues, which we wholly expect it to, July will mark the longest economic expansion uninterrupted by recession that the United States and by proxy, Canada, has seen in the last 150 years. Now, long expansions aren't brought to an end just because, like all good things, they have to finish. There has to be something to catalyze a move into recession. And here, the biggest threats to the continued expansion are policy mistakes coming from Washington. Otherwise, the fundamentals that we see in Canada and the U.S. and other major economies are pretty sound. They're not terribly exciting. They're what some people call a Goldilocks situation of not too hot, not too cold, more or less just right. But long expansions typically get undone by policy mistakes like the fiscal stimulus put into place by the White House earlier this year, which was like pouring gasoline on an already hot fire. That is the sort of circumstance where you prompt further increases in inflation, which then are motivations for the central bank in the U.S., the Federal Reserve, to raise interest rates more quickly than it might otherwise do. And calibrating how many rate increases you need to keep inflation under control is not an easy thing to do. And as a result, you know, these long expansions typically get undone because of a policy mistake like that fiscal stimulus being matched by moves by a central bank that raises rates a little too quickly and starts crushing growth. So, you know, our fear would be that as the stimulus effect of that extra spending and tax cuts in the U.S. starts to wane as we go into 2019, the White House decides, even as the president used prior to the midterm elections, that we need another boost of tax cuts or spending to get high growth rates going into his 2020 reelection campaign. Also want to show you, you know, what we think of, and I think most macroeconomists think of, as one of the best indicators of recession probability over the next year or two, an index compiled by the Federal Reserve Bank of New York. Now, it has in the past risen just before the economy has hit recessions represented by these gray bars. We have had a small uptick over the last year or so from a 10% recession probability in the next year to a 15% probability. But against, you know, the scales that you normally anticipate before heading into recession, the move has been essentially tiny. So this is another one, and this compiles a number of different elements of the main data points that we look at in our forecasts. And what I want to emphasize here again is the probability risk has gone up only slightly. The headlines that are talking about recession are disproportionate to the increased risk. I mentioned the trade, excuse me, the fiscal deficits in the United States that have been touched off by that extra spending and those tax cuts. Those are set to keep widening substantially over the next few years in the absence of some kind of policy direction. What that means is a real paradox and a policy problem for all the rest of us who are affected by what goes on in the United States. When fiscal deficits go up, that stimulates more consumption in the economy, both by businesses and by individuals, and that's going to mean bigger trade deficits in the U.S. You've already seen record trade deficits over the last few months with China, record trade deficits with Canada, record overall trade deficits. The White House's stated goal to get those deficits down is entirely being frustrated by their own policy decision to expand their fiscal stimulus earlier this year. Their policy goals are running at cross purposes. They are not going to be reconciled on their current policy stance, and so you will see continued trade rhetoric from the White House that's damaging for us. The strength in the U.S. dollar has also meant you should see those trade deficits widening because just like all of us, when we live near the border, you know, the extent to which we go over to Buffalo or Niagara Falls to shop is highly contingent on the exchange rate. That holds true for entire economies as well. And with the U.S. dollar at very strong levels over the last few years, you're set to see that current account, which is another way of referring to the trade balance in the U.S., moving further into deficit. And I mentioned earlier this notion of calibrating demand and supply in the economy. That's one of the main things central banks need to do. In the U.S., this middle chart shows us whenever we go above that horizontal line, we're in a situation of excess demand, too much demand for goods and services chasing too little supply. That's at the highest level of excess demand the U.S. has seen in two decades. And so, you know, we entirely anticipate the U.S. will move ahead with four more 25- or quarter-point rate increases over the next year or so, and that's going to be mirrored in Canada, where growth has become a lot more diversified and so therefore, you know, in our view, more sustainable than we may have thought. It may not be a higher number that we're seeing overall, but it is a growth that is based on more pillars within the Canadian economy. I should say, this chart deck will be available for everyone after and can be circulated. So I'm moving a little quickly, given the constrained time of council. Don't feel you need to scribble, you know, anything down that seems salient to you. It'll be easy to pick this up after the fact. There's been a lot of concern over the last few weeks because of the announcement around the closure of the Oshawa Assembly Plant, or possible closure, that the days are numbered for auto manufacturing in Ontario. And I want to show you a few things that lead me to think that's more a GM story than it is a story about the quality of Canadian manufacturing or Ontario workers. If you look at what's happened with auto sales globally, and you would get a very similar-looking picture if you looked at auto sales in North America or in Canada, where auto sales this year are up about 13% overall, but GM sales are down about 17% on a year-on-year basis. You really see a phenomenon where people haven't stopped buying cars despite all the talk about, you know, millennials and Generation Z doing car sharing or not getting licenses. Car sales are on still a pretty good trajectory and should be this year just off record levels from the year prior. But, you know, GM has not done particularly well. You've seen some calls for people saying the GM plant closures a sign that manufacturing in Canada is too costly, that, you know, the wages here are too high, there's too much regulation. Well, if you look at Canada and the U.S. on a comparable basis, average unit labor costs in Canada are actually represented by the red line here for the total economy. The yellow line for manufacturing are actually lower in the U.S. and have been lower for a few years. We did spike up above the U.S. when the Canadian dollar moved to parity about seven or eight years ago, but with the dollar at 76, 77 cents, we are a much cheaper place to produce, and as a result, you have seen continued investment in manufacturing and even oil and gas. For the Hamilton region and southern Ontario as a whole, the left-hand side chart here, I think, is a really important thing to keep in mind, and I think one of the things that will continue to fuel growth over the next few years. Almost every major manufacturing sector that we look at, particularly those that export a large share of their production abroad, principally to the U.S., almost every one of those sectors is running at or above their long-run capacity utilization rates. So what that means is they are... So what that means is they are at peak use of their plant and equipment and people. Over the last few years, in many cases, they've been reluctant to invest in plant and equipment because of concern about the quality of the recovery, concern about lower oil prices back in 2014, 15, 16, and then concern more recently about NAFTA. That concern has led them to underinvest. That underinvestment can't continue because, up to this point, many plants have met increased demand by just adding more workers in, adding weekend shifts, adding night shifts. There are no more workers to add in at this stage. And so we expect to see, in part because of that stimulated demand from the US, a lot of investment in some of the key industrial sectors in this region in order to keep meeting swelling order books. In Canada, we really mirror many of the things I just mentioned in the US. The center graph shows an excess demand situation. Our inflation rate is up above our target of 2%, and that is going to be part of the basis with growth staying above estimated potential on the far left for the Bank of Canada, we think, to keep raising interest rates by another full point over the next year or so. So the overnight rate target right now, the main policy rate of the Bank of Canada, is 1.75%. We expect that to go to 2.75% either by the end of 2019 or early 2020. It will look through some of the recent pauses we've seen, you know, from the oil sector in Alberta. It'd really be driven by some of the strength that I just laid out. One of the important things to keep in mind here is that for central bankers, they are still providing, in their view, a lot of support to the Canadian economy. If you take that overnight target rate and subtract the current rate of inflation, which is around, you know, 2.3, 2.4% from it, you get a negative number. That is the real rate that people have to pay in borrowing terms. So with a negative real rate, you're essentially, if you can borrow at that most preferential rate, you're being paid to take out a loan. In those circumstances, and that's what this left chart is describing, you know, whenever we're below zero here, we're in a situation where the Bank of Canada believes that monetary conditions are still very supportive for growth. It is very cheap to borrow, and it will work to remove that. Oil prices are not going to provide, I won't dwell here long, but oil prices are not going to provide much of an abatement on those price pressures because we are going to see, because of that broadly rosy global growth picture, prices remaining more or less stable, and with more takeaway capacity coming into Western Canada, the discount on Canadian oil coming back in closer again. One of the big concerns, people have said that, you know, should stymie rate increases from the Bank of Canada, is household debt. It's something all of us think about and hear about. I want to show you a few charts that I think should mitigate some of those concerns. There's no question Canadian household debt levels are at some of the highest points we've seen ever in Canada, but at the same time, some of the quality of the assets and the quality of the borrowing, underpitting those debt levels, is stronger than we've seen in other circumstances. So I'll take you through just a few charts here and then dive in a little more closely on the Hamilton economy and then wrap up with a few points on trade. On the left-hand side, we're charting average household debt against annual personal income, personal disposable income. The reason why this chart is kicking this discussion off in this section is because if you look at the red lines, which are the Canadian numbers, they look pretty similar to the blue lines in the United States immediately before the financial crisis, where the ratio of debts to disposable income hit around 164, 165%. We're right at that level now. And so many have said, well, Canada looks a lot like the US pre-crisis. Maybe we've got a blow-up coming in Canada. The next charts are meant to outline why I don't think that's the case. So that first metric really isn't a great debt sustainability metric because it's taking your total stock of debt and comparing it to your personal disposable income, which is akin to saying, if you had to pay off all your debts based on your income in one year, would you be able to do it? And of course, 169% is saying you wouldn't. You would need almost two-years' income to pay off all your debts. But we're almost never asked to do that. And certainly if we were, almost everyone has some assets that they can draw on to sell in order to cover those debts as well. And so I think a better measure that compares a stock of assets to a stock of debt is charted out in the middle figure here, where we're looking at the ratio of average Canadians' household assets to household debt. And assets are generally worth about six times people's debt across the board. And at every point over the last 30 years, the asset-to-l liabilities ratio in Canada has been higher than in the US. We've had much healthier finances on average than the Americans. Many people will then say, oh, well, come on, Brett, those assets reflect a big inflation in housing prices in the Greater Toronto-Hamilton area and in the Lower Mainland Vancouver area. Well, that may be true, but if you look at our equity positions in those houses, those also are pretty high. Our equity values have remained between 70 and 75% for all of the last nearly 30, 30-some years, whereas the US, represented by the blue lines here again, has done much more poorly. So, you know, if we were called upon to liquidate those assets, we have a great deal more equity in them than would be the case for the Americans. I think the most striking chart here is the one on the far right-hand side, which is a reminder that Canadians are just a lot less in mortgage debt than the Americans are and whose stories we get, you know, whenever tuning into Irv Weinstein or his successors on Channel 7 from Buffalo. Less than 50% of Canadian households actually have a mortgage, and these kind of averages are reflected, you know, across Canada in this region, too. About 32% of Canadian households rent, about 23% own their mortgages outright with a mortgage. When we're talking about interest rate increases affecting household finances, we're really only talking about 41, 42% of households, so that any given year, it's only about 8% of households that are actually renewing a mortgage. And what the right-hand side chart shows here with this blue line is that those mortgages are getting renewed at only about half a percentage point or a quarter of a percentage point higher than they were written at previously, assuming they're five-year fixed mortgages. So I mentioned, you know, we do expect rates to continue going up from the Bank of Canada and Fed. I won't dwell too much on these yield curves, but what they are meant to say is that we don't expect interest rates to go much higher after those increases over the next year and a half or so. And in Ontario, we are going to be a bit middling in terms of the growth performance that I laid out for Canada as a whole, while a place like BC is set to do more strongly given the recent announcement of the liquefied natural gas project for the West Coast. Ontario is going to see a slight decline in growth going into 2019 and 2020, with growth coming down probably on the order of a little above 2% above average compared with the rest of the country, coming down from just above 2% to just below 2%. More or less just slightly above average compared with the rest of the country, but not strongly so. And with employment growth, actually, throwling back ever so slightly, if you look at the charts here on the right-hand side for Ontario, you've got an annual change in employment growth coming down from 2 to about 1.5%. And that should be more or less what we would expect in this region, too. We look at the fall fiscal review that the Ontario government recently brought through. There are really two things to focus on there. It's a lot of announcements. I would say there are really only two essential things to focus in on. One is the LIFT, the low-income tax credit that they'll be providing, and the second is their efforts to stimulate greater housing supply, particularly in Southern Ontario. On the LIFT, Hamilton actually is probably going to benefit from that slightly less than some of the other cities in the region because the proportion of households that have low enough incomes in Hamilton to qualify for this tax credit is actually lower than is the case as a percentage of the total household population here than in St. Catharines, Toronto, London, and Windsor. So while it will be beneficial here, the boost to the local economy is likely to be slightly smaller than in some of the neighboring regions. As well, on that second priority on housing, Hamilton's actually doing pretty well compared to other cities in the province. What this chart on the right-hand side looks at is the number of new units under construction compared with the last year's change in population. So it's trying to align, are we getting enough new housing units being built to keep pace with the additions to the population in these cities? And actually, Hamilton there, while, you know, the number of new units per new members of the population is a touch lower than Hamilton, has seen a real correction over the last year or so with a big improvement in building. And so in some ways, you know, the issues that the policy efforts from Ontario are meant to address are not as strong or as stark here. On the housing market, again, Hamilton looks relatively balanced in terms of being a seller's or a buyer's market compared to other cities in the country. Neither buyers or sellers, at least statistically, look like they're potentially more advantaged in a negotiating process. And when we look at the rental vacancy rate, Hamilton actually stacks up very well against the rest of the provinces as well. And in part, that reflects that previous chart that shows some of those new units coming on onstream here. Still, though, at a vacancy rate of only 3%, it's clear that, you know, getting those new construction numbers up a bit higher, and which the Ontario government is focused on with its policy announcement, does make a lot of sense. Briefly about some of those trade worries that we have about the Hamilton, Ontario, and North American economies. I do want to emphasize what has been a real success, I think, on NAFTA 2.0, where on the six points I note on the far side, autos, sunset clause, dispute settlement, supply-managed agriculture, government procurement, and IP, we gave up very little to the Americans and yet have retained tariff-free access to their market on 99% of our trade. I think, you know, if you want a shorthand for how to think about the new USMCA or what is being called the CUSMA here, it really stands for Unexpectedly Stable: Major Concessions Avoided. There is very little new in this agreement. It's a lot of NAFTA, cut and paste with a bit of the Trans-Pacific Partnership that President Trump deleted or ripped up on his first day in office. So there's little to fear here. It's particularly important for Ontario, given the share of our exports that go to the US. We're second only to New Brunswick in terms of the importance of the US market. And, you know, the auto quotas that we agreed to are unlikely to be binding anytime soon. But this is going to remain in the headlines for several months because I don't intend for you to absorb any of the details here, but it's meant to lay out the approval process. In the legislature, the Congress of the United States takes at least six months from this point. You're going to see terrible headlines, be untroubled by them. The agreement will pass. The bigger issue here, of course, is steel and aluminum. And here, we fully expect the tariffs on Canadian steel to be lifted in the first half of 2019 for two reasons. One, the US needs are still in aluminum. 60% of their aluminum consumption comes from abroad. 45 percentage points, two-thirds, excuse me, three-quarters of that importation comes from Canada. 16% of their steel comes from Canada, and much of it is specialized from this region. They cannot keep producing. Even if they give Canada and Mexico a quota and exemption, that will mean that a full 60% of their steel and aluminum is still coming in with substantial tariffs in place. I mentioned that trade deficits with China are continuing to widen to record levels for the US. That is likely to continue, particularly because China's enabled its currency to depreciate to take out the sting of those tariffs. This is my last chart. I know that's been a lot to absorb. The reason I'm pausing here is because I think it tells an important story about a White House whose bark is far worse than its bite. On China, each of these three pillars represents the three tranches of imports from China that have had tariffs put on them. The first is a $50 billion tranche of imports, which are almost wholly intermediate in capital goods, things that companies use, very few consumer goods, only 1%. The second two tranches of $200 billion and $267 billion that the White House threatens to impose tariffs on are almost altogether a third made up of consumer goods. So those are iPads, those are iPhones, those are galaxies. Those are things that we believe the White House doesn't want to impose a 25% price increase on its base heading into the 2020 election campaign. And one of the reasons, unlike some forecasters, we do not incorporate a big hit to global growth in our projections owing to a trade war with the United States, because that's a trade war that this White House doesn't want to fight. So with that, I'm going to wrap up there. It's a very quick run-through of the big things affecting the region, but I'd love your questions to the extent that we still have time in the agenda.
An important kickoff to the capital budget, much appreciated. It was very informative. I'm sure I speak for all of us and particularly you confirming your Beamsville roots with the Irv Weinstein reference.
Yes.
Our first question comes from Ward Force Counselor Sam Moro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Many thanks for the very thorough presentation and looking at it from a municipal councillor's position and the fact that you're dealing with an issue that's very monolithic in nature and very little influence from a city or municipal standpoint. What I'd like to do is deduce it down to what we can do to combat what inevitably will be a slowdown in the economy and what those best practices are in your opinion. So through you, Mr. Chairman, what have you seen in the past? And I know that, for instance, infrastructure renewal has been a real focus for many public entities to combat recessions. What's your opinion on that and can you elaborate on that accordingly?
So there are three things that I hear in my conversations that I think might be salient for your reflections. One is the very slow rollout of the infrastructure program from the federal government. And of course, in part, that is because it relies on coordination with the provinces and with the regions and cities. And, you know, there, I don't have a magic bullet to offer. In fact, I think you probably have a better perspective on what can be done either to speed that up or make it move more easily in terms of getting that flow of funds from the feds down to the level of actually getting shovels in the ground. But only a quarter of that infrastructure program announced back during the election campaign in 2015 has actually been implemented. There are a ton of dollars still sitting there that, you know, have not been actually transferred into municipal budgets and to actual building efforts. There's a lot there that still needs to be tapped that can be used within an individual municipality. The second thing we've heard consistently from our larger clients is that one of the big things they're concerned about right now actually isn't corporate tax rates, despite, you know, some of the talk about Canada being forced to mirror the corporate tax cuts that we saw in the United States. Certainly, the academic and policy literature says that top-line corporate tax rates are not the major determinant of where companies invest a marginal dollar in a new plant or a new distribution center. The things that do keep coming up again and again, it's something I heard at the Steel Summit here, too, is that companies are seeing a much more aggressive and effective move by states, cities, and regions in the United States to set up coordinated one-stop shops or, you know, one-windows, where, you know, if they're looking at locating a new plant or distribution center, they can get zoning, they can get environmental... or distribution center, they can get zoning, they can get environmental clearance, they can get the whole set of regulatory and planning issues dealt with in a very fast way through one portal. And by contrast, they do raise concerns that they don't find the process in terms of coordination between federal, province, region, and city as smooth in Canada. So it seems like there is something that could be done on that front. I think the third thing that all of us need to look at, particularly as labor markets are so tight, is, you know, our unemployment rate is at its, at a 40-year low, but unemployment rates are calculated looking only at the number of people who are actually looking for jobs or engaged in the workforce. So a percentage like 5.8% unemployed says 5.8% of the total pool of people who are interested in having a job and able to are not employed right now. That leaves out a whole swath of the working age populace that has maybe become discouraged, has, for a variety of reasons, withdrawn from the workforce. Finding ways to translate money available at the federal and provincial level down to, you know, municipal-level job centers, retraining, re-engagement programs to get those people back into the workforce are a major way to both alleviate some of your social services budgets and goose local economic growth. That's not easy. We know from labor force studies that as soon as someone is out of the workforce for six months, getting them back in is massively more difficult than it would otherwise be. So that's a huge challenge, and it's not one that I mention lightly, but it is one of those pools of resources that every community has that is sitting idle in many ways right now. If we can find local, experimental, innovative ways to get people re-engaged, that's a source of growth that can be tapped.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, has anybody captured what that actual number is?
So the, we could infer what that actual number is Canada-wide. We, I have in mind something called the participation rate, which is, you know, the percentage of people of working age between their late teens and mid-60s who are actually engaged in the workforce, whether they're employed or not employed. That hit a 40-year low in the wake of the financial crisis, both in the United States and Canada, in the low 60% range. Canada started bumping back up again, it's at a couple percentage points on that, but, you know, we're still about five to eight percentage points below where the high participation rate was about 20 years ago.
And what would you say that number is?
That's around the 70% territory, low 70%.
One other question with respect to what we discussed at the Steel Summit and the tariffs, and at that time, there was a great deal of uncertainty about the impacts, yet what we saw come to fruition was what we didn't expect, and that was profit, profits increasing, employment demand in the steel industry. It wasn't exactly bad news. Can you elaborate on that and explain why that occurred?
So I'll reference myself at the Steel Summit a bit. Those were the kind of things that I actually did anticipate a little in my comments then because the steel industry in North America has become much more specialized, you know, on higher-value content, higher-tech steel products, for which, you know, production is now localized at different sites all around the world. And so when the US tariffs went up, it wasn't the case that there were instant American substitutes for the kind of things that we produce here or get produced in South Korea or a number of other locations. With that specialization and that lack of substitutability, that means that when the US puts a tariff on, there is very little pressure on our producers to actually reduce their prices on the things they sell into the US because their things are still needed. You know, the companies they're buying from them can't go out and get them from someone else. And so the incidence of the tariff, basically who ends up bearing the pain of the tariff really falls on American industries and consumers. Flipside is, our retaliatory tariffs do the same thing to Canadian industries and consumers too because we've slapped reciprocal tariffs on. So many of the goods in the steel and aluminum space coming from the US also don't have wide substitutability. There aren't a lot of alternatives for them. So Canadian companies that are doing finished product here are facing much higher costs because of whatever specialized steel or aluminum products they're bringing in.
Now, through you, Mr. Chairman, do you believe that the record profits are sustainable? Or is it something that we'll see an end to it in the near future?
Well, you know, as I mentioned, we do see growth broadly slowing and, you know, steel and aluminum industries are two of the industries that are affected most clearly from broader growth slowing. But so, you know, to get into your question with more detail, so their top-line revenue is likely going to be coming down slightly. The total volume that they ship is likely to be coming down slightly. But the countervailing effect of that is that rotation in the sources of growth I mentioned where, because many industries in the US and Canada are at their production capacity limits, they're running their plants as hard as they can, they can't squeeze anything more out of them, they are sitting on cash piles to some extent that they've accrued in precautionary ways since the financial crisis, they are in a position to start investing to a greater extent than they've been in many years. Even though top-line growth for the economy as a whole is going to be coming down slightly, the components that make up that growth, we think, are shifting away from residential investment, consumer spending, and a little more toward investment by companies in plant, equipment, manufacturing capacity. And so overall, we think, you know, the outlook for steel and aluminum producers should be reasonably solid. Even though the top line's coming down on growth, more of it is going to be focused on investment, more of it's going to be focused on pulling in the goods they produce.
So then the projection through you is positive, but there will be an adjustment of some kind?
Yes.
That's a lot different than what we anticipated then.
Well, you know, the costs of the tariffs, if you're speaking about what we're anticipating from the costs of the tariffs, you know, the, as those go on over time, the costs that they engender are far broader and wider than is captured by the income statement of the individual companies involved. The cost for the economies as a whole is huge. If we look at similar tariffs that the United States brought in in 2002, 2003, under the Bush the Sun, those lasted for about 20 months. They are thought to have cost about 2.4 million jobs in the downstream industries that use steel. Steel, it was only on steel at that time, not on aluminum. And there were only about 180,000 people employed in steel production in the US as a whole who saw their jobs preserved. So the disproportion in terms of the allocation of costs and benefits is pretty big.
Okay. And lastly, with respect to the issues, and asking you about what we can do as a city, I heard the hold the line on taxes, that that in itself, in essence, doesn't create a stimulus of any kind, improving the red tape of our operations and infrastructure renewal. Do you have an understanding with respect to infrastructure renewal of what the return on investment is per dollar or is there an understanding of what kind of spin-off effect? Let's say a billion-dollar investment in Hamilton for infrastructure, what that return on investment would be, do you, Mr. Chairman?
Well, you know, the federal government has given every municipality a favor in some way that's trying to attract industrial development or investment through the fall economic statement that did bring the marginal effective tax rate on new investment down from around 18% to 13%. So we are a cheaper tax jurisdiction now, at least from a federal perspective, for investment than the United States. That tax advantage has been restored for new capital investment. So to the extent that a city can, you know, then create the propitious conditions around regulation, around zoning, around regulatory approvals to make that easy in, you know, their city versus another one, there's a real competitive advantage that you can deploy there. My point about taxes was more about top-line corporate income taxes, which is, you know, not within the purview of the city here. The, you know, the charges that are levied on municipal charges, you know, are still an area where, you know, cities are in direct competition with one another and need to be as efficient and as effective as possible. In terms of the infrastructure renewal, though, I do think that is part of a broader piece on, you know, what we call competitiveness. And unfortunately, the competitiveness debate in Canada has been boiled down to our tax rates higher or lower than in the United States. And what we know from cross-country studies is that is not the only metric or only indicator of whether a place is competitive. Resilient communities with good infrastructure, good public services, good healthcare, you know, a strong labor market with talented, you know, well-trained people, these also are just as important as tax rates in the competitiveness equation and doing the things that put those things into place over the longer term is important.
I guess through you, Mr. Chairman, I was saying a billion-dollar of infrastructure renewal, what that return on investment would be to the local economy. There must be a formula that can be applied.
Yeah, I'd like to say that there were a simple equation that says, put X dollars in and you will get Y amount of growth out of it. It's more complicated than that. It depends on which infrastructure you're investing in. It depends on whether there are particular choke points in a local or regional economy that are relieved by that infrastructure development. Some infrastructure is more urgent and less urgent than others. Some is, some is infrastructure that produces broader societal benefits that are a lot harder to quantify in dollar terms. So, and then at the economy level, you know, when we look at the entirety of Canada versus other countries in the world, the growth effects of infrastructure spending in the shorter to medium term, so let's say over two to five years, end up being rather muted. It's over the much longer term, you know, probably out of the budget cycle that you're looking at, that you see the real spinoffs in a longer-term sense coming in play.
If we were to give you, through you, Mr. Chairman, all of those variables, you could come up with a formula to determine what the spin-off effect from employment to economic development, all of those aspects, the return on investment would be?
Well, I think we could do something a little narrower than that. You know, if you're looking at specific infrastructure projects, we can look at, you know, the number of people employed, the number of person-hour equivalents.
That's exactly where I'm at.
You know, the average hours involved and, you know, what the likely impact of that is. So that narrower thing we can do, what is it going to do to the total output of Hamilton over the next two to five years? That's a much harder thing to pin down.
Okay. So at the appropriate time, Mr. Chairman, what I'd like to do is work with Mrs. Zagarik in formulating a motion based on what we've heard here today about issues surrounding how do we combat the inevitable recession related to the red tape, related to infrastructure renewal, and have a report developed so that we have an understanding of what the issues that were mentioned today and how they can, we as a council and as a city can put a formula together or an action item together to combat it in a proactive manner rather than reactive. Things are great right now, but ultimately, I think we need to be prepared for the worst. And if that, and if, based on what we're hearing today, he can, he itemized the three points, if we can have a report that expands upon that, I think it would be essential. So I'll work with Mrs. Zagarik on the motion and bring that forward accordingly.
I'm not hearing about an inevitable recession from our presenter here today, though, so you might want to change.
Downturn, sorry, a downturn of the economy.
Slowing, I mean, the headline is slowing, but slowing from 2.1% to 1.8% or 1.9% isn't a recession. That said, what I would highlight in that competitiveness discussion that every country and every community is engaged in, that's a problem that's never solved. That is, the bar on competitiveness is always moving. And so now is always the right time to think about being more efficient, being more effective, you know, streamlining red tape in regulation, making it easier for companies to invest. There is no time to pause on that. I would say that's always an urgent priority. Whether you're doing relatively better or worse against other places, it's always the right time to work on that.
Okay. So I'll work with some of this, as a gear recording, but also I have one more question. Sorry. I'm not sure if you're familiar with our downloading crisis here in the city of Hamilton or in the province of Ontario, but half of our operating budget, we don't, we don't control. And in dealing with that and the average person not recognizing that, can you elaborate on what it would mean for an uplift of that and for us as a municipality from an economic development perspective, if you are familiar with the issue?
Yeah, I'm very familiar with the issue. I think that, you know, that won't be solved easily by one city alone. That needs, you know, the range of municipalities to come together in a dialogue with the provincial government on what that needs to look like to be a truly sustainable balance. But, you know, one of the things to think about then is what are the structural programs in place that can provide revenue to you over and above that downloading formula or that, you know, revenue-sharing formula? So that's where things like the federal infrastructure program or the housing strategy are things you might look to that, you know, are not part of that revenue-sharing calculus and that can add meaningful resources on the side while, you know, that revenue-sharing discussion is going to be one, I think, that takes a long time to come to some kind of resolution. Think about, you know, the federal government premiers meeting today. They have the same discussion in many ways that municipalities and regions have with the province. That has been something that's gone on for decades in terms of both costs and revenue sharing. I would say in the shorter term, the tactical thing to pursue, even as you pursue a longer-term strategy about that balance, the tactical thing is to pull in the resources that are already committed, that are being undertapped from the feds and the province already.
In the short term, then with a long-term vision. All right. Well, thanks very much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, sir.
Counsel Ferguson.
Thank you, and Brett, it's great to see you. I was quite frankly mesmerized by your information. You went quick with it, so I'm glad we're going to see something afterwards because you downloaded a lot of stuff to us. But just to follow, but a quick summary, I sensed you're saying we're okay here in Hamilton.
Yeah, I think, I think we are. When you look at growth overall remaining decent, let's say, I know for those of us who remember the 80s and 90s, not as a historical figment, but part of our lived experience, you know, we remember growth rates, you know, around 3%, even 3.5%, you know, nationwide or in Ontario. You know, this is, this is lower than that unquestionably, but it's stably lower and it's with a mix in terms of the impact on prices that means while the Bank of Canada is raising rates, the top rate that they're going to get to is 2 and 3/4 or 3% at most. Again, remember the 80s, like, these are very low interest rates that are still pretty supportive for ongoing expansions. Then think about the chart I threw up, I'll go back to it.
Yeah, I remember having a mortgage in the early 80s of 13%.
Yeah. Of course, inflation was a lot higher than two.
You also had a Don Johnson blazer.
I just want to clarify, I did not have a Don Johnson blazer. Others around the table may have. This chart on the far left, I think, is really salient here because not only do you have decent growth and relatively well-contained inflation so that interest rates aren't going to have to go super high to keep demand and supply in balance, you do have all these major industries where they are at their long-term average capacity utilization rate, they need to invest as well. And I didn't highlight it earlier, but, you know, one of the funny old things about this year is that we were really concerned about the negative impact that NAFTA uncertainty would have on the Canadian economy, a kind of chilling effect on investment decisions or purchasing decisions. The best we can estimate that cost Canada as a whole, about 2/10 of a percentage point of growth. But that fiscal stimulus from the US, which I think is unsustainable, as I made clear with some of my charts and, you know, not well-timed, it has had a big spillover effect on Canada in terms of increased demand for our goods and services. And we think that spillover effect has been more like a half a percentage point of growth. So net-net, the Trump White House has probably had a positive impact on Canada, and that's reflected in, you know, those plants that are working at full capacity, those labor markets that are tight in Canada, and those growth numbers that are decent. Now, I would never want to be, I think I might get my professional credentials taken away as an economist if I don't say, but we still... away as an economist if I don't say, but we still should say for a rainy day, we should still take actions to increase our resilience ahead of all that.
As you get older, you'll be putting more away, you know?
Well, actually, as you get older, you normally get to the point where you're taking stuff out of the bank, right? It's when you're young, you should be putting things, putting things away.
But as an older person, you never want to, you know, put your kids in a situation where you can't be self-sustaining.
Well, that's true, and, you know, people's life expectancies have gone up a lot, too, so let's change the calculus. But, yeah, I want to convey the overall message that things are better than the headlines and the news is telling you.
That's good to hear, thank you for that. And we heard all the economists and business university professors, including Marvin Ryder, who is well-respected in this area as a forecaster in the business world, all predict that three or four weeks after the USMCA was signed, the tentative agreement, the steel tariffs would come off, but they stuck now for another three months. First of all, is our government getting a huge windfall as a result of that tariff? Because you're seeing, we're still bringing in that specialized steel that we need from the US. And secondly, as economists, why were those predictions wrong that would come off in your view? The tariffs would come off right after the USMCA was signed.
Well, the US Trade Representative, Robert Lighthizer, had said that the tariffs would be dealt with when NAFTA was concluded. So, NAFTA was concluded. To some extent, there's no great modeling underpinning the expectation that they would come off, it was taking him at his word. And that hasn't happened yet because there is a precedent that Brazil, Argentina, and South Korea set by getting exemptions from those tariffs by agreeing to quotas that for the next few years will limit their exports to the United States to 75% or 80% of the levels they exported back in 2017. Canada's government has refused so far to agree to quotas along those lines, and I think that's the major reason why the quotas have not come off.
Are they going to come off, in your view?
This is a judgment call in terms of what the Canadian government is thinking. I think they absolutely will come off because under the new NAFTA agreement or USMCA, the rules of origin on automobiles that require 75% of the value of those automobiles has to be sourced within North America for them to move tariff-free, 40% has to come from high-wage assembly factories. And there's a third rule that's been introduced, that 70% of the steel and aluminum in those vehicles has to come from North America. That rule is incompatible with the steel and aluminum tariffs. Every Ford 150, their aluminum chassis now comes almost entirely from Canadian sources. So, you know, you can keep the tariffs in place and bring in the USMCA, but you can only do that at the cost of much higher production costs for the companies involved and much higher cost to consumers. And I think the pressures there will be sufficiently strong to ensure that they get pulled back. The question is, will, will Canada cave essentially to the US demand that we agree to a 20% cut in our exports? I think if we do, it'll only be on steel, it won't be on aluminum because the US needs too much of our aluminum. And on steel, one of the interesting paradoxes we're seeing is that on the existing tariffs, American companies can make demands to the US Commerce Department for exemptions from the tariffs. They can make, you know, special claims that the things that they're bringing in can't be sourced anywhere else. There have been over 10,000 approvals of those applications. Ironically, they're being approved more for imports from China than for imports from traditional American allies such as Canada. So, there's some more lobbying to be done there that I think will factor into when the tariffs actually come.
We're a threat to the US, aren't we, even though we've been an ally for centuries? But that was why they put the steel tariffs on, at least the facade of why they put the steel tariffs on. I'm sure there's other questions, I just want to focus in on one more or maybe two more issues. The Canadian dollar is crashing, and I'm puzzled by that, when interest rates are, have crept up to help bridge the Canadian dollar. Unemployment is below, we're still seem to be exporting a lot of material, and yet the Canadian dollar is falling back and, you know, there's a lot of dependency on US product and food, particularly during the winter, because we have to import all our fresh vegetables. And this is going to shove the price up significantly because the dollar was down almost 74 cents this morning. What's driving that? Is it oil? Is it because oil prices so low? Is that what's driving it?
So, if you look at the Canadian dollar over the last nearly 10 years or so, at different points in time, you could explain most of its movement on just two things. Global oil prices, not the discount paid on Western Canadian oil, but, you know, the two major global benchmarks, Brent or West Texas Intermediate, or the rate differential between Canadian interest rates and American interest rates. And I think two things are happening, you know, in the last few days to weaken the Canadian dollar. One is that global oil prices have come down over the last week or so, and there's some doubt, there's an OPEC meeting that's going on right now in Vienna, which was meant to conclude yesterday, it got bumped to today, and the vagueness that seems to be surrounding that meeting implies that they are not going to agree to a major production cut that would boost oil prices again. Second thing is, you know, we had a relatively dovish statement from the Central Bank Governor here in Canada on Wednesday, meaning that it implied less urgency on moving forward with the rate increases that we expect. The path that we had been expecting from the Bank of Canada would have shrunk the rate differential between Canada and the United States. With the governor taking his foot off the gas, that implies that rate differential isn't going to close as quickly. And so, that, too, has meant people have moved out of Canadian assets because they don't anticipate the relative reward for being in them is going to be as high as it would have been under that rate path that the governor had laid out earlier.
Okay. And my last question is, do we really need to feel sorry for the oil producers because it wasn't that long ago we were paying $150 a barrel? Now we're paying $50 a barrel. So, somebody was clearly making a lot of money when it was at $150. Alberta still doesn't have any sales tax, we're stuck with 8%. Yet, we hear from the provincial government in Alberta and from the federal government now that we need to feel sorry for them. Maybe that's not a question for an economist, but it just seems like there's a disconnect there somewhere where it's okay to take, but it's not okay to go through the downturns like we've seen significantly here in Ontario over the years.
Well, I mean, there are two pieces there. I am certainly never keen to further discussion that pits, you know, one part of the country against the other because I think we're all in this together, whether it's, you know, thinking about the competitiveness of Ontario manufacturing or the competitiveness of getting Alberta oil to Tidewater. On the oil price issue, there is the global price downturn, which has occurred over the last few weeks, but there is also the discount that's paid on Western Canadian oil. So...
That's because they don't have the ability to get it to market as much.
They can't get it to market. So, there are two things going on. The overall global price downturn affects all the producers and, you know, reduces their top line. The widening in the discount on Canadian oil or Western Canadian oil affects producers very differently. For those producers that are limited, are Canada-only producers that produce in Alberta and Saskatchewan, they bear the brunt of that discount widening because they can't get their oil to Tidewater, much harder than international producers or integrated producers that, you know, have like a sun core that have a refinery or can ship to a refinery that they own in another country. For them, the Western Canada Select Discount is more or less just a profit transfer from one part of the business to another. For Canada-only producers, they're hurting very hard. So, that isn't crying wolf, they, you know, they're, they are not economic, the discounts that they're facing.
Is Alberta finally going to see sales tax then?
You know, that, that's part of a bigger set of choices for the provincial government there. I mean, one tax isn't, you know, something that you decide on in isolation, it's part of your whole fiscal framework.
The, we're going to finally see a sales tax in Alberta with lots of oil revenue. Okay, that's all my questions, thanks again for coming out.
Counsel Wilson. Counsel Wilson.
Thank you, that was very informative. I was just curious, you didn't identify global climate change nor wealth inequality as risk as factors going forward. Can you speak to that?
Well, the outlook that I'm speaking to is really the next couple of years. So, it's pretty short-term, and that is not meant to discount either of those factors as major issues. But they are not ones that have a particular effect on where the needle goes on many of these indicators for a two-year window. So, we do know that, you know, on the wealth inequality, and, you know, there are two pieces there, there's income inequality and wealth inequality. There are some really nice studies that have been done over the last 10 years or so looking at which countries keep what we used to call the American dream alive most effectively? Meaning, where are you most able across just a few generations to materially change the circumstances of your family? If, you know, generation grandparent was, you know, poor, immigrants just off the boat, how many generations does it take to become, you know, a solid member of the comfortable middle class in an economy? And what's really striking is that the countries where you see the biggest mobility across three generations of that sort are countries that have the lowest inequality on wealth and income measures. So, it ends up being the Nordics, the Netherlands, Australia, and Canada, actually. Countries that have far broader wealth inequalities and income inequalities are not seeing that same mobility. I should say that that mobility goes both ways. It's both, so what we look at is the correlation between wealth and income for the grandparent generation, the parent generation, the child generation. And we try to look at what is the correlation between those. If the correlation is low, it means you're able to move from poor to rich relatively quickly across those generations. If the correlation is high, means, you know, if the grandparents are rich, probably the kids are going to be rich, too, or conversely, poor, they're going to be poor. But the mobility goes both ways. In those societies where, that I just mentioned, the Nordics, Canada, Australia, where you see people materially improving their circumstances, you also see people falling down as well. So, when we talk about mobility, it's not just a one-way mobility, it's actually saying that, you know, people have more or less an equal shot based on their hard work or circumstances to either move up or move down, but it's more within their wherewithal to affect it. On climate change, you know, the numbers come in reversely in some ways in the short term because unfortunately, you know, something like a climate disaster along the lines of the fires in Fort McMurray or in California, you know, in one year, the numbers we're looking at here ends up, you know, showing a big hit to growth. The next year, they're going to show a big pop to growth. So, the horizon I'm looking at is just a little too short, you know, to talk meaningfully about it. But to the extent that, you know, climate control or climate change control measures can be positive sources of economic growth, I mean, as a long-term strategy, I think that's certainly something, you know, that a community needs to look at.
Thank you. My other question is sort of apropos Counselor Marula's discussion about competitiveness and future competitiveness, because you talked about, we just can't add any more shifts, we're working at capacity, we can't find any more workers. And I would hope that in your discussion with the city manager, how can Hamilton, moving forward, retain, attract and retain educated workforce and what that workforce is looking for, whether it be high-order transit, clean water, clean air, choice in living accommodations within urban settings? I'm curious about that. I don't know if you want to comment on that.
Based on my experience this morning, I think higher frequency and higher-capacity go train service between downtown Hamilton and downtown Toronto would be incredibly useful. I do think, you know, the things you mentioned are important, I think connectivity more broadly, too, so that, you know, we have seen in urban, or excuse me, in economic geography terms, over the last 20 to 30 years, conversely, even as the internet became a bigger thing and the ability to work from home or work from distance, if you look back 20, 25 years ago, a lot of futurists were saying, you know, it'd be part of the decline of cities, that you would see people moving out, you know, working remotely from smaller towns. In fact, we've seen a much stronger agglomeration of people into cities and, you know, small places are emptying out. So, I generally don't think, you know, cities have a problem attracting people right now, but the issue for a city like Hamilton, which has the colossus of Toronto sitting next door to it, how do you ensure that Hamilton can tap into the things that only Toronto can do in some ways because it is the biggest financial and cultural hub in the country? How do you tap into those things in a way that allow people to be in Hamilton, benefit from that, but also take advantage of all the things that you mentioned that make quality of life here distinct and different?
Excellent questions. Counsel Collins, can I get you to take the chair in five minutes? And if you could just put on your microphone there. Your next speaker is Counsel Whitehead.
Thank you. I act, I minored in economics, so I'm far below by certainly start some of the language and there's the whole theory of elasticity as it approaches this whole, on many fundamentals and a lot of economists may differ because there's so many variables, as you can appreciate. But there's things being tried and trued and tested, and there's been assessments on recession-proofing, and I don't think any economist has arrived at what the perfect solutions are. And automatically, government goes to putting more debt and making more investment. And I'm just interested in your understanding on whether creating that debt and making that investment at that time really was a benefit? Was it neutral? Or did it become a detriment in regards to the studies?
Well, we can look at the 2008 financial crisis and in the years following it, the stimulus provided by the federal government and by the Bank of Canada in lowering interest rates here was essential to sustaining growth through the years following 2008. Public spending in some years accounted for somewhere between a quarter to a third of all growth that was happening at that time. We didn't see, you know, a blow-up in inflation the way some people thought we would because there was so much slack in the economy that needed to be taken up. And, you know, for Canada, you know, we haven't seen an explosion in debt levels. In fact, you know, our debt-to-GDP ratio, which is another one of these metrics of how sustainable our debt is, even with the deficits the federal government has run over the ensuing years, is still coming down ever so slightly because growth is running ahead of that debt burden. At the provincial level, even with the big deficits we saw in the last few years, the debt-to-GDP provincially has remained, you know, just below or at 40% and is set to come down even without, you know, the changes implemented by the new government at Queen's Park. So, you know, Canada is far from a debt crisis or any situation where the sustainability of its debt would be a worry. And the other concern you normally have when governments are expanding spending is that, you know, they'll be creating too much demand for scarce dollars and push interest rates up and make it, or crowd out private sector desire for borrowing and investing. That hasn't happened at all in the last 10 years following the financial crisis.
Help me understand, you know, when I, certainly as a child coming up, they always talked about how a cent on the dollar was servicing the debt. And so, that was layman's terms and more understandable for the average individual. And then Ontario, for example, is my understanding, that the third biggest bill in context of every expenditure they have is paying down the debt. And yet, you say we have the capacity to continue growing that debt based on our GDP, is that correct?
Yeah, so, put differently, you know, our total income every year is growing faster than our total debt burden every year. So, you know, that growth in income... So, you know, that growth in income is running ahead of any expansion in that debt burden, which means that, you know, in basic income statement or balance sheet terms, we're not becoming any, any less able to service the debt that we have. In fact, we're becoming more able to service it as a result of growth running ahead of that debt.
So the chair, then if you're spending 60 cents on a dollar towards your debt, I don't know what the number is.
You're not spending 60.
What is the number?
I don't recall what the exact number is, but I think it's something for, it'd probably be something closer to around 25 or 30 cents, I believe.
So that's 30 cents that you're not putting back into the economy or into services?
Sure. But it's also 25 or 30 cents that is related to debt that you took out at a time when the private sector was not providing enough stimulus to the economy to grow, so.
The other thing about economics is like, you know, I always think of it, again, layman's terms, is you have, you can be too rich with your gas mixture to lean and there's a sweet spot. And economics is very much the same. There's a sweet spot in regards to all the variables to make sure that you're running on all cylinders. United States is outperforming Canada in regards to growth, all the variables, even the strength of the Canadian, or sorry, the American dollar. We're running at, they're running at three, over 3%, and we're running at, what, 2.2?
Yeah, they, growth in the, came in at 3.5% annualized in the last quarterly reading in the US, we're around 2.1. But that is as a result of tax cuts that are completely unsustainable at the federal level.
In the States?
Tax cuts and spending in the States, yeah. That is akin to a short-run sugar rush. And the hangover from that is going to be substantial. It's not clear this White House has any interest in dealing with the hangover from that, but that is a completely skewed situation that I would not advocate us replicating.
Appreciate. The, so when I look at economics, you've got macro and micro. I'm looking at, obviously the city's been part of that micro component, so, and this is a city council discussion, so I really want to bring it back to the micro. If you were doing an analysis on the economic city of Hamilton, you've got this chart that helps, I don't know what length that you've actually taken a look at, the Hamilton fundamentals, debt, investment, employment, you know, all the things you would measure. Where would you say, if there was a report card, you would see Hamilton now and maybe projected in the next three to four years?
You know, I think the challenge is really one that I discussed a bit earlier with Counselor Marula. How do you ensure that you remain the preferred place for marginal dollars of investment in Southern Ontario and in Canada as a whole or in the broader Great Lakes region? And, you know, there, it's a combination of, you know, ensuring your regulatory, your zoning, your planning systems are as simple and as clear and as easy to work with as possible for companies that might be choosing to invest here, that, you know, taxes and charges are competitive with other municipalities, and that you're doing some of the more sort of broader sense of things to ensure a sustainable community that makes it an attractive place for high-tech and high-skill workers to locate.
Appreciate. So, for example, we are building employment lands, significant employment lands around the airport, Red Hill, Ancaster, Stony Creek, lots of employment with Maple Leaf Foods and so forth. The challenge in the context of where the workers and the investment is, an intract investment is make sure we have a robust transit system that's not focused on one geographic area, but is distributed to meet the needs of the broader community, which attracts investment. Would you agree with that statement?
I feel slightly like we're litigating a question that's probably better suited to the council. I mean, I think we.
That's enough. It was unfair to do that. I noticed some of the attack that was taking place, so I thought I'd take account of.
I do think, I mean, I do think we see consistently cities that have strong public transit systems do well. The returns to strong public transit systems, I think, are unequivocally strong. The time to build public transit systems is, you know, almost like the old story about planting a tree, it was always the best time to do it yesterday. I think it's particularly propitious time now, given the support that does exist from not only the federal infrastructure program, but in the fall economic statement, you also had a commitment to transportation corridors and export diversification funds, you know, that could also be leveraged by cities and regions in conjunction with private enterprise in ways creatively that I think, again, provide options to get around some of the constraints of that, you know, downshifting or revenue sharing equation, which is a much longer-term and bigger discussion to get into with the province than one city can have alone. So, you know, my counsel to every region or municipality would be, look instead while you're, you know, or be parallel tracked, basically, in your approach. Have that discussion. That's a long-term engaged discussion to have, but pick off all these other programs. They're being underutilized, frankly, and which are, you know, providing dollars that could be used.
Fair comment. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor. Counselor, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation, Brett. It was very fascinating. I just want to go back to the projection for the period of sustained growth. So it was really interesting to me to see that we've been through fairly sustained, like a long period of growth, and that that's projected to continue even with somewhat of a slowdown. I was just wondering if you could give us a sense of maybe how that growth and that wealth has been distributed? Particularly, I'm thinking about at the municipal level with my constituency, I hear stories all the time from young people who are graduating with hundreds of thousands of dollars in debt. They're facing precarious employment. They have very little chance of entering the housing market. And then at the other end of the spectrum, there's also seniors who on paper are sitting on a very large asset, but in reality are struggling just to pay their taxes. And then in the meantime, we're talking about our budgets and, you know, just yesterday we looked at a water bill increase. So maybe you could try to tie those together?
I'll broaden it even just a bit further to think about the last 10 years or so since the global financial crisis. The, and, I was going to link it to Counselor Whitehead's remarks around debt. The measures taken by central banks and federal governments or national governments to both increase spending and reduce interest rates to stimulate the economy in the wake of the financial crisis, I think were incredibly effective. We avoided a repeat of the 1930s, which was entirely possible had we not got that calibration right. So I think there are policymakers across the Western world who really should be venerated as having done the right thing and learned, and having learned lessons from the past. The unintended and not entirely unanticipated consequence of those measures of providing almost limitless liquidity, making borrowing incredibly cheap to do, is that you've had a huge pool of dollars then following a limited number of assets, whether it's equities or shares or stocks in public markets, whether it's houses in Southern Ontario. If you own assets of any kind, you've seen this in things like the contemporary art market too, or wine auctions. Any physical asset has seen its value increase immensely over the last 10 years. Or even if you're a small business owner, you know, of course, depends on the exact nature of the business. If you're a travel agent, you probably haven't done that well as Kayak and other, you know, online agencies have increased. But again, if you own an asset, you are doing so much better than anyone who's had to rely only on wages for their well-being because wage growth has been very stagnant over that time. And so what we need to look at now and what things like the Ontario minimum wage increase and the mandated minimum wage increases across Canada have done, is at the bottom end of that wage distribution, you know, those are distinct measures to try to address that. And, you know, one can have legitimate concerns about the timing or pace of minimum wage increases, where they announced far enough in advance, where they sequenced or phased in the right way. But the broad notion of trying to address some of that imbalance through things like minimum wage increases, I think makes a lot of sense, particularly in this labor market where, you know, companies are bidding up wages anyway. And what we are seeing is that people who change jobs are getting bigger wage increases. People who stay in jobs are actually just getting inflation right now. And you shouldn't have to, like, threaten to leave or move to another job in order to just keep up with the cost of living. When we look at the labor market numbers in Ontario, it's really striking, particularly when you reflect back on some of the apocalyptic stories, you know, people were telling prior to the January 1st minimum wage increase. You know, you probably remember the stories about the Tim Horton franchises run by the heirs of the company east of Toronto who are eliminating, you know, breaks, eliminating, you know, free food and things like that. Well, turns out, the increase in minimum wage isn't reducing the number of hours minimum wage workers are working in sectors like quick-service foods, accommodation, cleaning, childcare, which are the areas that are most dependent upon minimum wage workers. It's keeping employment hours pretty much at the levels they've been at. It's increasing their incomes and companies' bottom lines, at least on average, of course, there's a distribution and some are doing better, some are doing worse, but in the average numbers, when we look at what's happening with inflation in Ontario, those minimum wage increases are being passed on completely to consumers in terms of higher product prices. So, you know, if you're able to afford to go buy a coffee at Starbucks that costs five bucks, paying 40 more cents on it so someone can get a living wage, and I know this doesn't sound like your standard bank economist story on things, but I'm not your standard bank economist, the, that seems like a really good trade-off and a really good policy move. And so, you know, without getting into the political discussion around this, I would just say that the numbers, underpinning the minimum wage increase so far this year, do not accord with any of the scaremongering that was associated with it. That isn't to say it couldn't have been done differently, it couldn't have been phased differently, but the broad notion of increasing minimum wage numbers in the midst of a very tight labor market, where, you know, I sat with the CEO of a major franchise operation that, you know, has outlets in all the food courts that any of us have ever been in across Canada this year. His biggest statement was, we just need more people. We need to not just increase immigration at the rates that we're doing now, we need to make sure that people are getting, who are getting thrown out of the country, you know, as a result of their, you know, hearings not going the way that they hoped, you know, those people need to be retained and we need to, you know, increase immigration levels even more quickly. So there's, there's a lot going on in the question you posed, but I think the most important way to frame it is in that distinction between how have you done over the last 10 years if you own any assets and how have you done if you're someone who just relies on your wage? If you own assets, you've done really well. You might not feel it, because all of us feel like we're stretched, right? I don't want to negate or minimize that at all, but if you own assets, you've done way better than anyone who doesn't. And keeping social cohesion in place, actually ensuring growth remains as strong as we'd like it to, because a minimum wage worker spends every dollar they get, pretty much. Things like a minimum wage increase, things like ensuring, you know, things like a universal basic income pilot get retained and revived so we see how to deliver, you know, both support and training and income to low-income people in a more effective way, I think makes a lot of sense. And, you know, as one of the people who helped support the Ontario white paper that brought that project in, I think it's a debacle that that was eliminated in the way that it was. So, you know, those are the kinds of things I would advocate for.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Clark?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. First, I want to thank Mr. House for a very comprehensive study. It was very enlightening. I'm wondering if he could provide any comments on his opinions regarding the trends in agriculture? Agriculture is a big component here in Hamilton, but I didn't really see, other than food products, you touched that. So we're watching food pricing going up significantly. We're seeing a loss of food production lands in Ontario to development and consequently the food security issue becomes a big issue. So is there long-term trends? Have you looked at that or studied the impacts and perhaps the long-term economic impact for agriculture?
Well, that's a big and interesting question for a kid from Vineland who grew up working on the cherry and wine farms. So there are a few things going on there. One is, I do think, when we reflect back on the 1988 Free Trade Agreement and then NAFTA, at that time, you know, there were many fears that the fruit and agricultural industry in the Niagara and Hamilton area would be more or less wiped out by open access from American produce. And, you know, it still pains me to go into a supermarket and not see local produce when it's in season as much as I do. But, you know, the industry's actually fared pretty well. The wine industry has done very well. You know, some of the other elements of the agri-food industry have performed well, and yet some sections haven't. You know, if you think of Edie Smith in Winona, you know, the production there is either much lower or eliminated almost essentially. So I think, you know, the broad brush on the region's agricultural sector is harder to characterize because it seems, you know, those, some producers have done well, some subsectors have done well, others haven't. So I think there are very different competitive forces at work there. But I think, you know, it does show us that the industry in the region can thrive, not just survive, but thrive, when it moves to, you know, high-quality production that is distinct for the region. And the changes underneath NAFTA, I don't, to NAFTA 2.0, I don't think threaten that in any meaningful way in terms of any of the shifts in access for supply-managed agriculture around poultry and dairy and eggs. For, you know, the broader markets that Ontario agriculture plays in, you know, I don't have a distinct view on where, you know, something like grain or other commodity prices are likely to go beyond being broadly stable at this stage. On the land use issue though, I think there is something where, you know, I have to really defer to the expertise of council. I find it interesting to see in a number of municipalities the extent to which the green belt is being compromised by a thousand cuts, where, you know, land transfers are being made between land that's designated green belt and other areas that, for me, do not seem like like-for-like trades. Certainly, I see that happening in Niagara where you see fruit lands below the escarpment being swapped and developed for fruit, for non-fruit lands above the escarpment that will never produce the same kind of agriculture. And I, it strikes me that over and above the economic issues or broad market issues involved, from a planning perspective, there either, there needs to be a dialogue between regions, municipalities and the province on what the green belt is meant to look like and what it isn't. And, and look at some of those transfers in a more concerned way because at some point you will dip below a level of critical mass. That means production of, you know, some agri-food products just won't make sense because there just isn't enough of it being done.
So just the last question, Mr. Chairman, if I may. So given the changes to NAFTA and some of the other trade deals that are going on in the discussions, I'd like your advice, would it be prudent for municipalities who have large agricultural sectors or large geographical areas with agriculture to conduct an update in terms of, I guess, an economic impact and development study for agriculture, given all the changes that have been occurring around us?
Well, yes and no, I guess. If the motivator for a study like that is the trade agreement with the United States, I don't think the changes are sufficiently substantial, although the. I don't think the changes are sufficiently substantial, although the devil is in the details there. I mean, it's an enormous document, which I have read start to finish, but you need to be, you know, not just a lawyer, but a trade lawyer of very fine caliber to understand exactly how every one of the little sub clauses and annexes and side letters impact on each other. But overall, the, the changes that I would see coming out of the draft at this point are not large enough to think that those will be the things driving changes in the agricultural economy locally. But I would think that, you know, as you've already-
What in terms of land use, Mr. Chairman?
So, in land, land use, you know, there, I think the, the bigger issue is that, in dovetailing with the discussion earlier around immigration, Canadian population growth is at the highest rate it's been in forty years right now. That's entirely being driven by immigration, it's not by organic growth of the population. And fifty percent of our immigrants come to southern Ontario or the lower mainland of B.C. So, the inexorable pressure on land use in this region is not going to relent anytime soon. And so, you know, thinking about, do you want to preserve an agricultural sector in, in this municipality, is a decision in terms of what kind of municipality you want to be, in terms of quality of life, in terms of diversity of, of the economics of the region. I, you know, I don't, I don't have a view for Hamilton on what that should look like, that needs to come bottom up here. But what I can say as the economist in the room is that the pressure on land use, the pressure for densification, the, the additional numbers of people coming into the region that will mean roads are busy, transit is busy, I don't see that relenting at any point in the next ten to twenty years.
Thank you for your candor, I appreciate that.
Thank you. I'll put myself on the speakers list, councillor Collins, if you don't mind taking the chair. I just have two quick questions, more of a comment on the second one, but Brett, we really appreciated your time here today. And I want to say thank you to councillor Marula, who initiated the Steel Summit, it was very successful, you were a voice of optimism there, as I would suggest after the last hour and a half you have been here today, all things considered. And one of the things that stood out of the many comments you made at the Steel Summit not that long ago amongst the many qualified voices, you were sitting right up there. And, you know, we were talking about the upside down and there was a lot of concerns at the time, NAFTA was a big part of the conversation, and obviously, the primary and prevailing focus was steel. And, you know, we're a much more diversified economy than we were, say, thirty years ago, and that's a good thing. I think we were smart as a municipality to support those initiatives to diversify, and, and it's put us in a good place. And thirty years ago, we would have had maybe fifteen thousand jobs at a plant that produces steel, where now it's twenty-five hundred or so. And you pointed out that a big factor, and it hadn't been pointed out until that part of the summit, that automation plays a very significant role. I'm wondering if it would be beneficial to us, particularly in this still steel city, to reiterate those comments you made as it relates to automation and how we're affected by that?
Yeah, sure, absolutely. If you look at manufacturing broadly in North America over the last fifty to seventy years or so, it has not been trade that has leached jobs out of the manufacturing sector, or even, you know, the more basic, you know, sort of blast and furnace or, or fabrication sectors. It really has been technological development, which is inexorable, unavoidable, you can put tariffs up as much as you want, that will not keep that transfer of technology out. If anything, what is really remarkable is the place that's resisting trade the most right now in the U.S. has been the best at preserving manufacturing jobs as a percentage of total employment overall and as a percentage of GDP or total income in the economy. Canada, actually, by contrast, has seen a much steeper drop in manufacturing jobs as a percentage of total employment and as a percentage of total output. And in some ways, that may reflect, you know, what has been a greater willingness in the United States to adopt technology, to not save the jobs that exist now, but to anticipate and create the jobs that will be there in the future. And I think it's that sense of looking to where the puck is going with technological adoption, which is critical to ensuring you keep highly skilled, high-value-added manufacturing jobs in a place like Hamilton. And so, that's, that's really about embracing change and creating, you know, the social ecosystem in the city that is attractive for the people who have the skills to fill those jobs.
So, we should, as a municipality, in your view, through your chair, follow that puck and support that ecosystem wherever we see those opportunities?
Well, and building on what you have, too. That's not a, you know, baby that needs to be thrown out with the bathwater. Build on the strengths that you have and the expertise in the community that you have, and look at what is the next technological development that, you know, will happen in that sector. That isn't, as you say, it's still Steel Town, and it's still Steel Town for a reason, because, you know, the more specialized production that's happening now does require specific skills and specific experience. Build on that skill and experience further.
Right, and I'm just thinking, again, as a municipal leader, as we have presentations from people like M.I.P., McMaster Innovation Park, who continues to grow and expand, and a lot of their focus is on, you know, that puck and where technology is going, and you would, I'm assuming, would suggest that we, you know, follow closely those presentations, get the right staff to support M.I.P. and those delegations, and when they make their pitches, those are the kinds of things we should probably take seriously.
I, I think that makes a lot of sense. You know, communities that do not have a major healthcare center, a major university, or another major cultural center are generally communities that are dying. You know, Hamilton is big enough not to sort of be affected by that calculus, but that doesn't make it immune from the need to strengthen those central core pillars of the community to the greatest extent possible.
Okay, finally, through you, Chair, and you don't have to answer this one, but I just been thinking, as you've presented, again, with the sort of optimistic approach, many of us may have been thinking, how's this recession going to look? Not if, but when, and all of that, as you came in here. Certainly, you've changed a lot of our thinking and presented that with your qualifications. And to that end, as an economist, two-parter, how long have you been making these prognostications? And what's your batting average?
Well, I don't get a scorecard anymore, although I think a scorecard would be a good, a good idea, we keep everyone honest. I, rather than, you know, trying to claim like I've gotten it right at every stage along the way, which I would never do, what I would offer is, although it sounds like my bio, you know, was discussed, just some reflection from that bio. I spent most of my career until three years ago outside of Canada, in London, in D.C., in New York. In those roles, I worked with many governments around the world that faced financial crises, that faced situations where they couldn't pay their debts, they had to be restructured substantially, and entire policy frameworks had to be rebuilt in order to reflect those changed and straightened circumstances. And I think the, the thing I heard in almost every case was why, you know, someplace was different, why the laws of economic gravity didn't apply there, why, you know, the problems that had occurred, you know, were somehow not their fault, or, you know, came out of a set of circumstances that were particularly individual and that, you know, could not have been avoided in any way. In fact, I think, you know, the real lesson from all those experiences is that, you know, economics work pretty much the same way, every place with some specific details that are different. And, you know, the things that you're discussing today around what you can do to make, you know, the place a more attractive spot for investment are the same questions people are asking everywhere, and that every community is working on. And so, there is no time to relent on them, because everyone else is moving at exactly the same time. But I think what is important to push back on in those discussions, as I've done today, I hope effectively, are the, are the kind of glib headlines that sound intelligent, but are in fact, they're not based on numbers, not based in fact, not based on a reading of policy books, but, you know, are kind of easy and smart-sounding things to say, you know, and don't necessarily reflect the moment we're in. You know, things like the Canadian national debt and deficit were really big concerns in the nineties. They were appropriately big concerns. Canada was well in the way to becoming the next Belgium or Italy in economic terms. For any of us older than forty, you know, our experience was completely seared by that experience, and we see, you know, the current fiscal framework as somehow out of whack because of that. I think what a challenge now is for any of the people sitting around the table like this, is to continually update your sense of what the priorities are, what are the real problems are for the moment that we're in now, not the moment in which, you know, many of us were kind of formed by twenty years ago in our youth.
Excellent. Really timely and much appreciated on behalf of all of us, and it sounds like you've traveled as much as the other kid from Beamsville, Bill Burke.
Not as many hockey rings, but yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Move to receive the presentation moved by councillor Ferguson, seconded by councillor Pearson, all in favor? Any opposed, seen none? And now, on to, thanks again, I hope the traffic isn't as bad getting back to where you're going.
Thank you very much.
Mike Zagerich, interim city manager, will provide his presentation respecting report FCS 18096.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Just as Brett's leaving, I do want to thank Brett, not only for his commitment and support to the city of Hamilton today, but earlier this summer during the Hamilton Steel Summit, as well as I want to thank Bridget Menard from Audit Services, who not only invited Brett here today to join us today and help kick off our, what I'll describe as global budget process, but helped to coordinate the Hamilton Steel Summit. So, thank you to Brett, thank you to Bridget, and to councillor Farr's last question around accuracy, we'll ignore the three-quarters-of-a-page disclaimer at the end of your presentation, so. So, and also, well, Buffalo had Irv Weinstein, we had Tom Charrington and Dick Beddell, so, so thanks so much to Brett. And I would suggest that a number of the conversations that, and themes that we heard this morning are going to weave its way into our conversations, not only today, but over the next number of weeks and months as we go through the budget process. Going to make a suggestion, and just checking in where we're at, I would suggest that took us a little longer, but it was worth the presentation. I do have two presentations, and I'm going to suggest that I continue to deliver those two presentations, but given the decision committee has made to refer the capital budget process onto January, there may not be an immediate need to get some additional information on the detail sheets from all the staff today, given that we have a capital budget GIC scheduled for next week. So, my suggestion is, and it's subject to council's will, is to proceed to receive both of my presentations, but to release all the staff who are not necessary for the companion reports, or that the general managers may need their support through, through the presentation, just in case there's some, some high-level questions that GMs can answer. But if there's any detailed questions with respect to the projects, and recognizing that you've just received the capital budget books recently, so you haven't had the chance to really delve into the detail sheets, is we could come back next Friday with staff to answer any specific questions you have with respect to either the global capital budget and, and the detail sheets. Recognizing on the operating side is, especially for the new councillors, is the departments will be presenting in the new year, as well as boards and agencies, all the details that are driving their budgets. So, on the capital side, there's a little more urgency to continue on with the process. And so, my suggestion is, and it's the will of, it's the decision of council or committee is to, for me to continue to deliver the two presentations, and if there are any questions with respect to the detail sheets, is we can invite staff back for next Friday's capital budget GIC.
I don't think we need a motion, it looks like everyone's in agreeance to that, so we release most staff, leave our general managers, everybody okay with that? Anybody have a problem with that? Good suggestion, Mike. Thank you. We'll give you some time to vamoose. Sure, all of the staff who are leaving now also appreciated our first delegate.
It's up to the committee if you want to do the operating today or capital.
Councillor Johnson?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Mike, I believe, is going to go through two presentations.
That's right.
One is strictly about the capital budget. Is that appropriate, then, to push that presentation to next week?
Well, I-
Strictly with the budget overview, and let's go from there, because we've just released everybody that could answer some questions.
Yeah, but we did that knowing they're coming back on Friday, so I, I don't think it would hurt having the presentation unless your concern is, which is valid if it is, that we're just going to get that same presentation again next Friday, and maybe we can ask our interim general manager if that's going to be the case, is it worthy holding off on five-three altogether on today's agenda?
So, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. With respect to next Friday, it wasn't my intent to, to repeat the presentation, but if it's the will of committee, if you want to just focus on the overview today, is I could bring back the capital budget presentation to next Friday. And again, is, I would suggest is, we can invite staff then to go over the detail sheets for next Friday, or if you give us some sense leading up to next Friday, your preparedness to get into the details. Again, we could just have limited staff here next week in terms of specific questions, and then in the new year, get into the meat and potatoes of it. But again, I'm, I'm in your hands as to how you want to proceed with the two presentations. I can deliver the overview, which is the more, the global overview, and, and defer the capital budget presentation to next Friday.
Actually, you know what? I, it was just a suggestion that we keep all the topics together, but if Mike's comfortable with doing the two presentations today, and then that would be the segue into the next meeting, I'm fine.
We're going to do the two presentations.
Great. So, I do want to just come back to Brett's presentation, because, again, you're going to see a number of those themes weaved into our deliberations over the next number of weeks and months. So, a couple, a couple comments with respect to some of the themes that Brett raised was infrastructure funding. He made reference to the, to the current federal government's 2015 plan, and at that time, the infrastructure, the Build Canada plan was really about job stimulation at a time when there was a need and an interest to create jobs. And if you look at those, those funds and the commitments, is, I would suggest, the number of municipalities are just in the midst of delivering on those projects. And if you think back, was, the original plan had quite aggressive substantial completion timelines that we knew we weren't going to deliver on, and we knew it was going to be a challenge. So, if you think of our transit maintenance storage facility, we understood the risk and we identified it as phasing it. So, why do I raise this? Is, I would suggest that the framework is there with the federal government and municipalities through the gas tax revenue sharing. The gas tax revenue sharing is not an application-based process. It doesn't require municipalities to put forward applications to both senior levels of government. We went through that process during the most recent round. I would suggest to you that ninety-eight percent of the projects that went forward were approved. It took likely a year and a half to have grammar changes, word changes, and attestations approved through that process didn't provide a lot of value. So, so to Brett's reference to the infrastructure funding, I, I would suggest that the framework is, is, exists, and we just need both senior levels of government to be open to applying that framework on a go-forward basis, and moving away from the application process as it relates to infrastructure funding. Workforce continues to be one of the priorities of senior leadership team, and it's one of our, our priorities as it relates to a strategic plan. The mayor's Blue Ribbon Task Force is working towards trying to identify where there may be barriers and opportunities to provide the skilled positions that are required in order to meet the demands of this community. When we did our citizen survey in 2018 this year, while the city ranked very high in our, from our citizens as a place to work, live and play, the area that they identified challenges is, sorry, live, work and learn, the area that they identified challenges is, is work. So, so again, I would suggest that is an area where we're, where we're very focused on. Housing, I thought it was very- Housing, I thought it was very relevant that Brett talked about our housing market and the forecast regionally on housing. You'll see in the budget documents that you've just received, especially on the capital budget book, one is, there is a strong reliance on debt related to helping to facilitate growth. Is, you'll see there's a disconnect from our budgeting approach versus our planning approach, and that is more specifically surrounding places to grow. Places to grow forecasts have housing. We're probably about eight hundred units short in single detached units with respect to our actual experience versus places to grow. And on our non-residential, we're averaging about fifty percent of the forecasts of places to grow in terms of square footage. We're about a million square feet historically, last five-year average versus the two million. So, again, is, we need to manage that risk. We need to understand from a planning requirement, what's required of municipalities, but from a fiscal budgeting approach is, we need to manage that risk and ensure that we aren't front-ending or over-servicing for future growth. So, again, just a few tie-ins to Brett's presentation. The other piece of information that a few of us found very, very interesting is the forecast for 2019 around rate increases. And there's a few reasons why for the City of Hamilton as a corporation that's interesting is because, as I mentioned, is we're reliant on debt as part of our financing strategy. We just closed on a recently, on a hundred and ten million dollar debenture, and we closed at three point three-one-seven percent on that debenture. If you look back at our previous debenture, ninety-nine million, two years previous, it was two point three percent. And Brett's forecast has the Bank of Canada rate increasing by a hundred basis points next year. And so, that cost, that represents higher borrowing cost for us, and that erodes some of what we've experienced as it relates to variance as year-end surpluses. Our year-end surpluses in part have been driven by the gap between what we assumed for the cost of borrow and what our actual cost of borrow was. So, that is interesting to us, because that room may erode going into 2019. And then, on the flip side, is we have reserves. We plan for future replacement of capital. We have about nine hundred and ninety-four million dollars based on 2017, eighteen forecasts, and those reserves generate investment income in 2017. Those reserves generated about twenty-four million dollars in investment income, likely going to be in the twenty, twenty-one million dollar range for 2018. And where we apply those reserves principally is back into, sorry, where we apply the investment income is back into reserves to ensure that we have funding in place for future capital investments. So, given the forecast today is there may be some offsetting benefits to us where there is higher cost of borrow, we would hope that there may be some higher return rates on some of those reserves. So, I just wanted to tie in some of this morning's presentation from Brett to the discussions we are going to have going forward through the 2019 budget process. Just before I go any further, I need to just thank senior leadership team and their departmental leadership teams. We have been working towards the 2019 budget since the summer, and while you've just received those books, is we've been working hard towards compiling the information. So, a thank you to senior leadership team and their departmental leadership. A personal thank you from me to Brian and Cindy, as I've been, had the honor to fill the interim position, is Brian and Cindy have really picked up a lot of the responsibilities around the budget processes, rates, as well as tax. So, a personal thank you to Brian and Cindy.
Mike, just two things. One, just in case those staff in the bleacher seats that didn't get the message, you're okay to go. We're just meeting now our general managers. You can, you don't need to be up here unless there are some that have already spoken to you, and they do need to be here. And the second thing is, in the past, folks, we've, especially in the early days of budget presentations, we have questions of clarity as the presentation proceeds, and if committee would like to do that, or we could just wait and ask clarity and any other questions after each presentation. Right now, we're just going to ask the questions after each presentation, but if someone wants to jump in to ask questions of clarity on any one particular slide, we can do that too.
Absolutely. So, I won't spend a lot of time, many of you have seen this pyramid slide, but where I want to focus on is the fact that the information that you've just received with respect to business plans and multi-year budgets do tie into Counsel's strategic plan as well as the community plan. Is the seven priority areas of Counsel's strategic plan in part are supported by focus areas and staff are in the process, and those focus areas are revisited every four years. And so, we are in the process of revisiting the focus areas. I believe approximately thirty-two focus areas that support our seven priorities. So, again, what I would suggest is you should be seeing tie-ins between the business plan and the strategic plan, and A, the way that the documents are formatted, and B, as it relates to priority setting. And as well, on the left side here, you'll see performance measures. There was a number of questions and comments raised around reporting yesterday, and I think some of those questions and comments provide us opportunities as it relates to our citizen dashboard and our trust and confidence report to incorporate some of that information through future updates to those programs. Getting into the 2019 budgets, leading into a budget that was going to closely follow an election cycle, senior leadership decided that we would set a guideline for city departments, and that guideline represents a number of factors. User fees, and I believe the user fees are coming before committee in December. User fee guideline was set at two percent, and it's not to suggest that all user fees are going up by two percent. Some user fees may be a little higher than two percent based on market conditions, as well as factors around recovery, the need to recover more from the users. Some user fees may be less than two percent, and again, because of market conditions or other factors. So, again, that information will be coming forward to committee later this month, and that provides some non-tax revenue to the city and helps staff set the tax levy. The departmental guideline was set at one and a half percent, and you'll see through this morning's presentation and through the budget documents that that one and a half percent excludes business cases and council-referred items. So, but I will suggest, and you'll see in a few slides shortly, that while we refer to our forecast as a maintenance budget, is, I would describe it as a little more than a maintenance budget, and I'll explain that shortly. Our 2019 capital budgets was submitted, again, we have multi-year budgets. 2018 was our first four-year multi-year budget, and we have forecast half a percent for 2019. So, you will see in the capital budget is a half a percent, what I have traditionally described as our traditional maintenance or block funding. What you're going to see a little different, see that's a little different in 2019 versus previous years, is less of a capacity for funding what I described, or others described, a state of good repair, maintaining our existing assets, and having to put more funds into growing our economy. And so, you'll see a bit of a change in course for 2019, and then I would suggest reverting back to previous practice in 2020 to 22 in our forecast. And finally, in addition to the internal guideline, we did share with external boards and agencies what the internal guideline was. It was not a guideline for the boards and agencies. We just shared through a correspondence that the city departments were working towards a one and a half percent guideline. Not going to spend a lot of time on the overall departmental breakdown. So, further than the one and a half percent, there are certain circumstances or events that are causing departments to come in either at or slightly above the one and a half percent. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on public works, but what you're going to see in subsequent slides is a number of factors that are driving the higher than one and a half percent increase in public works. And in part, I would describe that does not necessarily represent, or those factors do not necessarily represent, a maintenance budget. The other one that really stands out there is corporate financials, and for the new counselors, corporate financials are expenditures that do not necessarily fall into program areas. And so, I will be presenting, or Brian will be presenting later through this budget process, corporate financials as well as non-program revenues. So, what is driving that significant increase of about twenty percent or five million dollars corporate financials? When Counsel approves a capital project, there are operating costs. For instance, if we reinvest in an existing recreation facility or build a new recreation facility, it requires staff to support that facility. So, those are referred to as operating impacts from capital. What we do is, we align those operating investments with the time that that facility comes online. So, we don't front-end those operating impacts. We approve the FDE, the full-time equivalent staff, as well as the operating cost when that facility opens its doors, and we try to match it. So, you'll see through this budget process, this is an introduction, but there'll be much more information with respect to what those assets are, and you'll see that again through the capital budget process. That represents about three point nine million of that five million dollars. In addition, the City of Hamilton relies, is through the realignment of services between the federal, or sorry, the provincial and municipal governments, is POA was effectively downloaded to municipalities in the sense that we share in the revenues. What we're seeing in 2018 is a drop in our Provincial Offenses Act revenues, POA revenues, I'll try to be careful around acronyms, our Provincial Offenses Act revenues of about one point four million dollars, and we'll have additional information with respect to where that activity is dropping off as it relates to those revenues. The City of Hamilton has two legacy pension plans, our Hamilton Wentworth Retirement Plan, as well as a legacy HSR Plan. We reported in 2017, we have an actuarial deficit in those plans that requires an additional million-dollar investment into those plans, and that's a driving factor to the five million dollars as well. We have had a legacy issue with respect to sick bank for firefighters. We have been phasing in a increase in funding to their reserve to help fund sick bank for firefighters, and that's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar contribution to that. The one offsetting, and there, we haven't had a conversation, we will have a conversation with respect to this benefit, is there's a one and a quarter million dollar benefit. For some of you, you may recall that the provincial government changed the legislation around vacant commercial industrial properties. We used to have to provide a thirty percent vacancy rebate to those properties. Municipalities had an option as to what to do with that vacancy. You could either eliminate the vacancy or repurpose the vacancy. To date, Counsel has taken the position to apply that vacancy to reduce the levy, the global levy. So, that represents a one and a quarter million opportunity, so it's offsetting those previous pressures in that five million dollar mark. So, again, the departments will be presenting their departmental budgets in the new year, as well as boards and agencies. So, you will see that boards and agencies are reflected not only in this slide, but in subsequent slides, and those organizations will be before Counsel with their presentations as well.
Counsel Ferguson, just-
Just one quick question, Mike. The previous slide, you showed a guideline of our internal city departments at one point five percent. Go back to the next one.
Back to the, oh, sorry.
No? This one? One point, department made this budget guideline of one point five percent. Now, go ahead to the next slide. So, as acting city manager, you set a guideline of one point five percent, and only one hit it. Does that not trouble you?
So, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I'm going to touch upon a number of factors that I would suggest are not, that are causing what I would describe again as not being a maintenance budget. And if you, if we can just park that for a few slides, I'm going to suggest to you that the departments are actually coming in likely around, probably about nine million dollars, not twenty-one million dollars. And while I show departments at two point two percent, once we net off a number of factors that I'm going to explain really aren't maintenance budget issues, we're coming in departmentally contributing to the three point two at point seven, not two point two percent. So, I'll get to that in a second.
It's coming to that, Counsel.
Okay, but that just jumped off the page. Your guideline's one point five, and you're sitting at four. I think that's some explaining to do, and because that's up to the city manager, I think, to control those departments to come into your guideline. But we'll see what else you have to say.
So, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and I'll touch upon it, but what we've been very careful to do is, based on previous guidelines from Counsel, is we're suggesting not reducing services or service levels through this budget. In fact, what you're going to see in the next few slides is we're increasing services, service levels in our maintenance budget for a number of factors. So, for that reason, I would suggest it's not necessarily a maintenance budget. So, again, in terms of, let me revert back, while the overall levy's increasing three point six percent-
Sorry, Mike, again, for clarity, on the slide that is before us.
This one, or?
No. Yeah, thanks. I just want to make sure I understand, you were talking about the financial practice, when Counsel approves a capital project, you don't front-end the operating impact. And holistically, I'm trying to understand, how then can we understand the overall impact of a capital decision when we don't consider long-term financial implications which include operating?
So, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I'll slow down a bit, and I'll break that down into two parts. Is the capital, when the capital project is brought before committee for consideration, not only will you see the components of the cost of the capital project, whether it's the construction, design, project management, but you'll see revenue costs as well, specific to the capital project. And then, further into that information, what you will be deliberating and approving are the operating impacts. So, for instance, if it is a new recreation center at fourteen million dollars that requires fourteen FDE and a operating impact of two million dollars, not only do you approve the fourteen million dollars, but you approve the two million dollars in operating impacts and the complement, the staff required to support it. The point I was trying to make is that project will likely not meet substantial completion or be doors open for eighteen months to twenty-four months. So, what we do is, we pause on the approval of the staffing and the operating dollars until such time as that resource is online, those doors open. And so, for instance, what you'll see is phasing. If that facility opens July first, we provide the program area with the funds for the first six months, and then the full annualized impact the year after. So, what we try to do is, and in part, this is around tax competitiveness and not causing surpluses in budgets, is to ensure that the departments have the resources necessary for the period of time that that resource is, comes, is open to the community, or comes online. So, I hope I've answered that question. And so, in terms of, coming back, is the, while the operating budget's increasing by three point six percent, the impact for an average residential property owner is three point two percent. So, I do want to thank staff, because in terms of our starting point, this is a favorable starting point versus previous years. If you break it down a bit more, if I take that three point two percent and I break it down a bit more, is city departments represent about two point two of the three point two percent, or seventy-five dollars of an increase of a hundred and eleven dollars, and I'll be, I'll try to slow down, is the a hundred and eleven dollars is for an averaged assessed property in City of Hamilton at three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, one hundred dollars. So, you'll find in your, within your wards, is some will be higher than that average, and the increase would be greater, some will be lower than the average. So, in part, it's subject to the assessed value of a property. What we do is, we take the average for the whole city, which- What we do is we take the average for the whole city, which currently for 2018 is 337. It will increase because we're in the midst of a reassessment period. We're entering into 2019 is year three of four, and I'll be speaking to that in a few slides. So again, city departments represent about 2.2% of the 3.2. Boards and agencies, we're showing at .9. A number of caveats and disclaimers here. What we've, the largest factor in boards and agencies materially dollar-wise, 77% of the board's agencies budget is Hamilton Police Services. We've shown their five-year average, which is 2.9%. We have not received formally from the board yet what the 2019 to '22 ask is, so we put that as a placeholder for the purposes of our overview, as well as a number of conservation authorities. In terms of capital financing, you'll see in the next presentation our capital budget and forecast. It's the traditional half percent capital levy increase to fund our infrastructure programs, and an additional .02. And PTIF, I would suggest, ignore the PTIF, it's really our transit strategy. PTIF is one of the funding programs. It's the federal provincial funding program that we leverage to help fund for our transit. That represents, we're forecasting for 2019, in order to leverage some of that funding, will require an additional .2%. So that's how we arrive at the 3.2%. And as I've suggested, is there's a number of factors that are driving the increase as it relates to departments. And if we look at DARTs, is you'll see going into the 2019 deliberations, we're showing an increase in our DARTs funding of about $4.3 million, which is significant given that our 2018 budget is about $17 million. So a significant increase in DARTs for a number of factors. The first factor is forecasted increase in number of trips, I believe about 66, yes, 67,000 additional trips. So we're forecasting a total of about 787,000 trips. That represents about $1.4 million of that $4.3 million. And then there's a number of contractual pressures within DARTs around collective agreements, subcontractors, as well as some other contractual inflationary pressures, and that makes up the balance of it. I will suggest, for the benefit of all committee, is this is an area that we have not budgeted properly for a number of years. And this year, we had to do a transfer from reserves of $2.48 million to shore up this program for 2018. For 2017, we did a million-dollar transfer from reserve and had an unfavorable variance of about $217,000. This is an area we need to correct the budget for. And so in part, it's the trips, it's inflationary pressures, collective agreements, and it's right sizing the budget. And that's contributing $4.3 million. The operating impacts from capital that you'll see as part of the subsequent discussions is a number of assets are coming online, and that represents about $3.9 million. So again, not a maintenance budget. These are new assets, and we're requiring the resources, the complements and the dollars to support those assets. We're entering into year three and four of the transit strategy, the resources required for the transit strategy exclusive of capital, and that represents about $1.8 million. I mentioned the Provincial Offenses Act, the decline in revenues, Provincial Offenses Act, that's $1.4 million, and the pension deficiency. What is not captured in this table, and some of you may recall this issue, is our recycling revenues are declining. And they're declining in part, again, because of a global factor, is the market globally is declining for our recyclables, and there is a $2.4 million transfer from reserves in 2018 to shore up that, in 2019 to shore up that program. We have enough funds in that reserve to do that for two years. So that is not a sustainable practice, and once we have a better sense as to what's happening with respect to the recycling markets, we'll be able to make decisions that are more sustainable as it relates to the funding of that program. So in terms of the additional rise for DARTs, the additional contractual pressures for DARTs, operating impacts for new capital facilities, our transit strategy, increasing our investment in transits, moving the transit strategy along, the decline in Provincial Offenses Act revenues, and our pension deficiency, that's $12.4 million of the $21 million departmentally. So if I go back, and I say, adjust the departmental maintenance budget to better reflect the cost of providing the services today, tomorrow, or into 2019, we're at .7 of that 3.2% increase, or about $8.8. For that reason, I'm suggesting that 3.2 and the 2.2% is not a maintenance budget, because it captures an additional rise for transit, or for DARTs. It moves along our transit strategy, as well as deals with some issues around DARTs and our POA revenues. So in terms of other pressures, the city is a service provider. We provide services principally, and one of our principal resources to do that is our human capital, our staff, who do a wonderful job in providing those services. They're paid, they're compensated for the work that they do, and there are inflationary pressures with respect to our staffing. And you'll see it's broken down there. I won't go through the chart in detail. Is there our cost of living adjustments? I mentioned the operating impacts from capital, it's not a duplication. Out of that $3.9 million figure, 2.1 of that 3.9 represents additional staffing. Transit of that transit strategy is 1.2 million, out of the 1.8 million, represents 30 additional transit operators. So in 2019, we are forecasting the need of 30 additional transit operators. I will point out, that is phased in over the two years. Those transit operators are forecast to come online in September, so we fund only the first, or the first three months, September, October, sorry, first four months, September to December in 2019, and the balance of that, another million dollars, will affect the 2020 budget. With respect to employer benefits, and government benefits, and OMRs, and WSIB, you can see the breakdown there. Just in terms of COLA, cost of living, is just for everyone's benefit, a 1% increase in cost of living represents about a .3% residential tax increase. So every 1% increase in cost of living represents .3% of a residential tax increase.
Slide, Mike, Sam, or Counsel Marula?
Actually, it's not on this slide, it's on page 11 regarding the reassessment tax.
We'll get to you when we get to page 11. On page eight here, Counsel Pauls, for clarity on what's being presented here.
Okay, I just, back to my other page, the DARTs. My, my? Oh, is the one?
My fault, it's my fault. It's the chairman's phone.
Okay. Okay. So, thank you. I just want to know, why is the DARTs, 4.3 million, why is the rise in ridership? Is it more like seniors taking it? Maybe I don't know much about the DARTs system.
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, so it, part, it reflects our aging population, and it's not just those who are aged who are eligible, it's those individuals who may have physical or cognitive disabilities who are eligible. And so that represents about, we're forecasting an additional 67,000, 67,000 rides, and that would grow to about 600, or 778,000 rides in total.
So are we using it like a bus system?
It is a, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, it is a door-to-door service, and the provider, it's a contractual relationship between the city of Hamilton and DARTs. They provide as an outside agency, they provide the service to the city of Hamilton, and that's why it's presented as having contractual inflationary pressures. The city doesn't provide the service, we subscribe to DARTs for the service. And for various reasons, they've experienced pressures, in-year pressures, that has caused us to draw from reserves to pay off those pressures in previous years. What we're suggesting is that budget needs to be right-sized, because that continued practice of drawing from reserves isn't sustainable.
Thank you.
And I'll try to speed up to get to slide 11 sooner.
Go ahead, Ben. On the last slide, Counsel Ferguson.
Yeah, I don't know whether Counsel Wilson had a question on the last slide either, because I'm jumping the queue. I think you should probably let her go first, and then I'll come after. I don't want to jump the queue.
Counsel Wilson, on slide eight, the employee-related expenses?
No, my question is, next. Sorry, I must be back.
We haven't. We got to go back to seven, I think. Mike, there you go.
Sorry, through you, I'm just, can you give me an example of some of the operating costs, operating impacts from capital, $3.9 million as a driver? What are some of those examples?
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, again, if I use the example, and I apologize for continuing to use a recreation example, but it's probably a good example for people to understand, is when the Bernie Morelli Recreation Senior Center comes online, and it's one of the factors, is we require staff to service that facility, there are heating, cooling, maintenance costs. That is the operating impacts from capital.
Perfect, go ahead. Oh, that's first. Just back to the DARTs slide again, Mike. So the $4.3 million is a big hit, and this has been an ongoing problem for a lot of years. I think it was four years ago, we did an operational review on this thing, and it come back that Dave Dixon headed it up for us, and come back that we needed to go to a different type of vehicle that would carry one passenger, that's going to see a million-dollar reduction, it's a fact has gone the other way. So we have some real accountability issues with what they're spending over there. So I would like to see a slide and a future sheet. What was their budget, and what was their actual, and what was the increase? How much has their budget increased? Whether you're drawing from reserves, or getting a budget increase, or the reduction, just so, I think the new members of council need to say, this, see, this is an ongoing problem. And I know Counsel Jackson raised the issue about voting members on council in that board, because the board, my perception, I don't know how those feel, is that they're not financially accountable, they don't, they just increase the budget and send it off to us. And I also sent an email after Counsel Jackson did, back to our city solicitor, wanting to know, why can't we just amend the agreement then, so the two members of council can in fact be voting members? And I haven't got a reply to that yet. So two things. Number one is, I'd like to see the history on DARTs, because that's a big hit, $4.3 million. And what performance standards are we going to put in place to make sure that they can in fact come in on budget? And then also, Mike, do you have any update? Because I think I also copied you in that email. Why can't the two members from council be voting members on that board? Why can't we amend the agreement to do that? Same as you do with police, same as you do with conservation authorities, library board, all of them have voting members of council on those boards.
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, if I can start with the last question, and then we'll work back, is with respect to the governance of the board, is we can have a future conversation, and I would suggest, given the interest with respect to the governance structure of DARTs, it's worthy of a future conversation, is I would categorize DARTs for the benefit of committee members as different from police, conservation authority, as those are legislative boards that require council's participation. And for that reason, you are a voting member. The DARTs board, DARTs is a contractual service, it's not a legislated service, and it does not require council's participation. In fact, your participation may expose the city of Hamilton incorporation to some risks, given the decisions of that board. So we'll bring that back.
Just on that, Mike, look at the risk we're exposed to under the current structure. It isn't working.
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I'm going to suggest is, we do still have, I believe we still have a transit day scheduled. This is a conversation worthy to be part of that transit day, not just in terms of our conventional transits, HSR, but to add DARTs onto the agenda, and we can have a conversation with the city solicitor with respect to the governance model for DARTs, and options going forward with respect to our agreement with DARTs.
So to amend the agreement with DARTs, does that just take a motion of council?
So through you, Ms. Deputy Mayor, I think we would need to have our city solicitor and some of Dan's staff from transit here. I don't have the answer.
Prior to these two presentations, to let a whole whack of staff go, so this could be at the very earliest, next Friday, we can delve into detail, but I think your suggestion might make it part of transit day.
Now that's too late. Transit day, the transit budget's coming.
Why don't we get back into it next Friday and get your questions answered?
As long as there's an agenda item for this, and the city solicitor's invited to attend, because I simply don't, I think Counsel Jackson agrees, we don't understand why, I mean, if it's not a legislative board, it should be easy to fix. It's not legislated, it's just our resolution to council. To get two voting members of council on that board to try to fix this ongoing problem that's been plaguing us for years.
Okay, so through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, we'll work with the clerk, with clerks, and we'll find a date, and with respect to the council's previous requests, we can compile the history with respect to the services as it relates to budget and actuals. Is that something to come back for Dart, or for transit day? Or would you like that as part of the context around governance? Okay. Okay.
Okay, now, I think you've inspired a few others, and I'll ask in advance, it should just be brief, if you're speaking to the DARTs issue, it's clear that it was council in previous years that voted to expand, who becomes eligible to ride the system. Many, many, many thousands more since are taking advantage of, so eligibility is through the roof, which has a lot to do with costs as well, but that's as short as the commentary I'm going to give at this point. But Counsel Marula, you've been on this file for some time, and I know you wanted to make a comment.
I just, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm glad, I'm glad it's taken 20 years, but I'm glad people are finally coming my way on this issue. But if we can just simply have staff provide streams of reports, and motions and so on, compile it all, just for everybody's perusal. As you can recall, I started this initiative back in 2001, trying to bring it in-house due to the fact that every year was a phantom savings. So what was the request for a budget never ever came to fruition, it was always in its heels, literally, for 20 years. And so in essence, what they claimed to be saving was never ever coming to fruition. So it's been compounded and compounded. We've gone out to an RFP, we had, we had staff come back with a report to, with reference to privatizing, or bringing it in-house. I did bring forward a motion to try to bring it in-house, and it wasn't successful. We've not saved a dime. If anything, I think it's cost us more. Had we brought it in-house back in the day, we would be miles ahead. But better late than never. So if we can perhaps, I'll bring forward a motion, move ourselves, sent by Counsel Collins, that staff just compile, i.e. file for everyone's perusal, particularly in new councils, on the issue since amalgamation, where we were. Where we were, and where it's actually landed to date, two motions and reports, and then we'll go from there.
All right, I'm going to come back to you with a motion after this presentation, so after 5.2.
Specifically related to DARTs.
Yep, that's fine. You're looking for chronological history since amalgamation of DARTs, and...
That's the motion, so...
Very good. Yeah, I'll come back to you with that. So Counsel Whitehead sat on the DARTs board as a non-voting member for some terms?
Yeah, and again, it's my understanding, it's no different than I, you know, it's just coincidence that Counsel Ferguson decided to leave the room now. We don't have board members on, or council members on the contracting of our garbage services. We don't have council members on the contract to provide snow removal services. DARTs is a service provider for the city of Hamilton, and this is how the lawyers determined that by having counselors vote on, I mean, not that I agree with this, I want to make it clear, but this is the context. Because it's a service provider, that a like employer, by having us actually have a vote on it, was the argument for not having counselors vote on it. I didn't agree with it, but that was how it came to be. Now, on the DARTs thing, it's the greatest football to be thrown around. We had two operation reviews, we've had independent people come in and say it was one of the most dynamic services in Canada. In fact, it was one of the lowest... In fact, it was one of the lower-cost service providers, most dynamic, with all our comparators. So, from a, if you put things in perspective, and take a look at paratransit in other communities across North America, or across Canada, ours was outperforming 90% of them. So, the reality is, is that when we budgeted, we had a human rights case that came in and basically said that we had certain parameters to meet. And so, when we budgeted, the problem is, is when you're providing 10, 15, 20,000 more rides a month than it was budgeted for, because you don't want to run afoul with human rights, then you're finding a very, we need a better and more dynamic approach to budgeting DARTs. Now, the other thing we did is we grandfathered people that otherwise in many other communities wouldn't be eligible to run on paratransit systems. In Hamilton, we showed compassion and grandfathered many of these people, which adds to the additional burden of providing the service with the amount of rides that are going in. So, this is a political football. I would only ask that we provide those operation, independent operation reviews, where it does identify that DARTs is one of the most, the DARTs, the paratransit services in Hamilton is more dynamic, meaning, when I say more dynamic, I mean, they don't have as many rules in strict, in regards to advanced bookings and so forth, as many other paratransit systems are much more restrictive. We take actual same-day requests, which no other paratransit system in Canada does currently. Acuta, or whatever the organization, has done their own assessment of the services in Hamilton in regards to paratransit, and has us at the upper level in regards to the efficiency and the level of service that we provide. So, we can pick on it, but let's look at the facts, let's look at the numbers, and understand that we have some constraints with the human rights past rulings. So, I just wanted to highlight that, I look forward to a robust conversation, and look at the true metrics. And the last piece is, it's pretty clear, and you know, right now, Canada Post is looking at these significant charges. When you take in something in-house, you take in pay equity, you take in comparison in job and cost responsibilities, there's going to be a significant increase just to provide the service, bringing it in-house and outside. And I would suggest that if you look at cost per trip, because that's what it really boils down to, cost per trip, we're one of the most competitive paratransit systems in Canada. Thank you.
Excellent. You've always been a strong voice, councillor Brad, councillor Clark.
So, I was under the impression, Mr Chairman, that we decided to kick it forward to a governance discussion. The council's right about human rights issues, there are issues with the Human Rights Code and past decisions, but equally, those past decisions have now put an onus on council to actually be participating in that governance structure. So, we're kind of caught in a really hybrid here, it's not really a private company, it's a not-for-profit, and I think we really need to hear from the city solicitor to understand some of these complexities.
Good. Excellent point. Very good couple of points there. Nice to be debating again. Councillor Jackson, the final word on DARTs?
Please, capital.
I pressed you already.
That's two days in a row. Thanks, Mr Deputy Mayor, that's all right. I just want to add further on the governance side, my frustration being two non-voting members, and probably that's the reason why the clerk so far hasn't been able to secure anyone from council to serve on it, that's just my editorial. But, Mike, would you also, with this report coming back for a full discussion on the current structure of DARTs, my understanding, Mr Deputy Mayor, also is that the citizen voting members, it's a self-selected board with an internal selection committee. So, our own selection committee that chooses after full interviews, citizens that serve across a wide spectrum of our agencies, boards, and commissions, and hopefully impart upon them the fiscal responsibility, the service responsibility programs, and working in concert as much as possible with council. Mr Deputy Mayor, through you to the acting city manager, I just want you, Mike, to confirm if in fact it is a self-appointed committee of citizens as well. Thank you.
So, through you, Mr Deputy Mayor, that's accurate, and that can be part of our conversation when our city solicitor and staff report back with respect to the governance. I think it's been well captured, we're in a bit of a hybrid model here, is where there may be future opportunities to discuss the governance of that, of that board, and the role between the city and that agency.
Okay. So, I'll just... Mike, I'm just going to have councillor Marula move the motion now, we pretty much debated ahead of the motion anyway, and it's pretty, general speaking, it's just asking for a report back, and a clerk is going to stymie us now. Sure.
Mr Deputy Mayor, first, you're debating a matter that's not before committee right now, but this, he's not moving a motion with respect to the budget, he's moving a motion with respect to governance. So, that motion should be separate, we're in the middle of a presentation, and done at the end of the meeting when there is, when you can take motions, but today, motions are strictly related to the capi, or to the budget process. So, perhaps I can help the councillor prepare something for council, and put it on the floor rather than today.
He might argue that this is related, but Mike is lying.
I'm trying to get this plane to land soon, so I'm just trying to help you help yourself. So...
Please, like, I think you were pretty much working the tower for this debate, so you inspired a lot of the conversation. I'll ask Mike now to skip to your page eight, I believe you were on, and I will now be enforcing the rule of questions for clarity only and no commentary henceforth on each and every slide, including item 5.3.
So, through you, Mr Deputy Mayor, I think I'm with slide eight, so I'll move on to slide nine, is with respect to staffing and complement, and just to be clear, for all committee members, this is specific to city departments, this does not include boards and agencies. For instance, the library and Hamilton Police Services complement are not captured in this figure. Our 2018 restated complement is just short of 5,777 staff. We've talked a bit about operating impacts from capital being about a $1.2 million pressure, so these are the new facilities, new assets that require staff to support it. Out of that $1.8 million impact, 1.2 of that is staffing, that represents about 20 and a half full-time equivalent positions. There are a number of reductions as well, that staff are putting forward as part of the 2019 budget, 2019 operating budget, and you can see that across the organizational areas. Again, there's additional information in the budget book, so I won't go through all of those. I mentioned previously, the additional 30 transit operators are reflected in the 2019 budget, so you'll see that figure in this table, and in the city manager's office is an additional 1.5 FTEs, and these are, because of our policy, our complement control policy, the city can, city staff can only approve positions up to 24 months. There was approval for some transgender training, and that represents 1.5 FTEs for a three-year period. And because it's a three-year period exceeding our 24-month staff approval, it requires city council's approval, and that represents the overall change, you'll see, of 26.8 FTEs in terms of other complement, other than the operating impacts from capital, the total change is 47. I just want to bring us all back a bit, just some appreciation in terms of where we've been as it relates to complement since 2015. Terms of our current forecasted complement of about 5,825, that represents a change of about 133 full-time equivalents since 2015. And if I go further in terms of what's transpired between 2015 and 2019, we've added 90 FTEs in transit over that period, against the 133. We've added 20, just short of 28 paramedics, and all of the previous capital projects have represented additional complement of about 37 positions. So, again, if you compare our current position as it relates to complement versus 2015, what you'll find is that we have been very focused on trying to control our overall complement. And again, in part, that was driven by some reductions in 2017. So, again, while our total complement has increased since 2015 by 133 staff, we've brought in new assets, new facilities that required 30, 90 new transit operators and transit staff, not just operators, and just short of 28 paramedics. So, I do want to recognize the efforts by staff to try to control complement and overall growth in complements. I'm not going to spend a lot of time in the boards and agencies, because frankly, there's a lot of assumptions there. We're very early on in the budget process, and there's only a few organizations who we have heard back from. Hamilton Public Library submitted a, the board submitted a budget increase of about 719,000.
Sir, Mike, I'm not sure what the, what Jason was exercising, but I do have two questions, I don't know if it was on the last slide.
It was based on the complement.
Okay, can we go back to that slide and just have that addressed at this point? So, I do have councillor Wilson.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry to keep returning to this, Mike, but the ongoing costs associated with capital decisions as they turn into operating costs, a complement increase of 20 and a half, it would be, is there any way going forward that we can see where and what that is associated with? Because in terms of my due diligence, and the impact on slide 11 that this is having in Ward One, I think if we're going to be hopefully talking about our infrastructure deficit and our budgetary and fiscal health, I need some help in understanding going forward what are the full impacts are when we're making capital decisions. And I don't know where this 20 and a half complement resides.
So, through you, Monsieur Deputy Mayor, all of committee will provide that information as part of the budget books, and will be able to guide you to where that information is, specific to which facilities or which assets are not only driving the need for additional staffing, but what the operating impacts are, if there are, for instance, energy or other costs over and above, if it's a physical asset. And then you will see, if we get to the capital budget deliberations, or presentation, you will see in my capital budget overview presentation, a illustration on how those operating impacts of capital arise, because we will have 2019 capital projects that you will be deliberating on that will have operating impacts. So, I do have a good example, I believe, in my presentation deck, that illustrates those operating impacts, and how they tie into specific capital projects. So, short answer, we can provide you the information with respect to the 20 FTE and the overall financial impact, and then you will see in the 2019 capital budget, a future ask, because again, if they're 2019 capital projects, for the most part, they will be part of future operating budgets. So, you will deliberate it on capital projects this year, that will likely impact for the most part, 2020 or future years, there are some immediate impacts for some capital projects. One example is paramedics, an additional vehicle, and additional paramedics to support that vehicle to maintain our existing service levels, or paramedic services. So, there's an example that's going to be more immediate.
Thank you. Councillor Marula.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Mike, just with respect to the complement, you said that it's increased by 133. Do we know at present how many vacancies we're budgeting for? If you can recall, through you, Mr Chairman, years ago, a number of times, we encountered situations where we were funding vacancies, and the money wasn't being allocated towards salary, but other initiatives, or put in reserves. If you could just perhaps elaborate on the vacancies?
So, through you, Mr Deputy Mayor, and if I'm not answering, if I'm going off in a different direction, please just stop me. Is part of our budget process is, we recognize that positions are vacant for various reasons. It could be a medical, short-term medical leave, long-term medical leave, a maternity leave, it could be someone who has chosen to leave the city and pursue other opportunities, so as a result, that position is vacant. Globally, within the tax-supported program, we budget, I believe, $4.5 million is our continued budget for those vacancies. So, we make an assumption in terms of those positions being vacant, and that $4.5 million is reported in our corporate financials, I may reference corporate financials, but then the actual experience is reflected in departments. I don't believe that has changed for 2019, it still remains at $4.5 million. So, that $4.5 million is applied to reduce the overall levy. We assume that positions will be vacant throughout the year, and that departments will realize savings from those vacant positions. They are, they have targets now, starting in 2018, council approves specific allocations to departments, and that is applied to reduce our overall levy.
So, you can say with a great deal of certainty, Mr Chairman, that none of those vacancies are being perpetually funded annually, perpetually, without any analysis?
So, if the, so through you, Mr Deputy Mayor, if the question is, do we have positions that do not have complement? Is that the question?
Right.
So, we shouldn't have positions that don't have complement, and that we have a complement control policy that says, now, I will say, is we could have positions that do not have complement, the authority is for up to 24 months. So, if we have an emergency situation, and I, and we need a project manager, or someone to deal with the situation, we have the authority as staff to fill that position for up to 24 months, and it shouldn't drive a deficit in that department.
So, we're not...
Beyond the 24 months is we should not have, in fact, you will see in the business cases, is where we are coming forward with requests for complement, because we're approaching that threshold of 24 months, and we need approval now to make those positions permanent.
Okay. So, could we have a report on that issue? Because I think if you're creative enough, and I'm not saying anyone's being dubious or anything, but you could very well, within that 24-month period, fill those positions and then choose other vacancies for another 24 months, where you have a perpetual vacancy within the complements itself, and it could be, it could be used as a reserve for the department itself.
So, through you, Mr Deputy Mayor, we can circle back with the councillor, to just better appreciate, understand what exactly you are asking for the report back, but we can maybe through HR and through the departments, identify how many positions are, we refer to them as temp, temporary permanent positions, up to 24 months, and if any of those are reoccurring.
That's exactly the thrust of it, yes. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. Have no other speakers? Mike?
So, I believe, yeah, just quickly, slide number 10, I'm not going to spend a lot of time, there's only a few agencies that have formalized their budgets, as Hamilton Public Library is one of those. I mentioned previously, Hamilton Police Services represents 77% of that global overall budget, and we have not yet received from the board their 2019 to '22 forecast, and I believe Hamilton Conservation Authority, that is a board-approved figure. But the rest of those will be updated through the budget process, and again, just as a reminder, and a benefit to new councillors, these agencies, Hamilton Public Library, Police, RBG, and Conservation Authorities will be before you as part of our boards and agencies. So, the overall budget residential forecast preliminary is 3.2%, and I'm going to now take a minute to describe some of the assessment and reassessment impacts to that 3.2%. There's really two. And again, we are in year three of a four-year reassessment period, and so what has occurred with respect to shifts in the previous two years, we are expecting to occur in years three and four. So, two shifts. One is the shift that is before you in this graph, is across the residential properties across the city, there have been different experiences as it relates to reassessment. While for the most part, properties have had their valuations increase, their experience has varied, some have had higher increases than others. Some have had higher increases than others. And so for that reason, you see variation in terms of the, the impact across the 14 wards. So in total, what you would do is, as a, as a ward counselor, if you want to get a sense as to where we sit globally as it relates to residential property owners, you would take that 3.2% and you would add the impact that is on this graph to that figure. And so what you will see is the range based on 3.2%, which I'll be careful does not include council-referred items or business cases. That 3.2% translates into a range across the city of 2.8% to 5.2%. So you add the reassessment shift to the budget impact. This is the first reassessment shift. The, and I apologize, I'm going to go back because I think it's in one of my slides here. There's a second reassessment shift. And the second reassessment shift is contributing to 0.5 of the 3.2. And for those returning counselors, you'll be familiar with the fact that our residential, through our last reassessment, residential valuations increased at a higher pace than non-residential. So that represented a shift from our non-residential, our commercial industrial, onto residential of 0.4, 0.5%. And that 0.5% is, we make assumptions with respect to assessment growth, and I apologize because I skipped over this. We are assuming right now 1% assessment growth, but when you net off that shift of tax burn from non-res onto res, that reduces the benefit of 1% assessment growth or $8.4 million by half, by 0.5. If we did not have this impact, that number would be at 2.8%. But because of the shift in burn from non-res onto res, it represents a half percent shift. So I hope I've explained, there's really two factors as it relates to reassessment. It's the factor across classes, and, and right now it's residential, who's bearing an additional cost or burn. And then within the residential class, there are shifts based on the experience within the wards as it relates to the increase in valuations. For the most part, everyone's valuation has increased, they've just increased at different rates or percentages. And for those, and it's traditionally, we're consistent in terms of the first two years, and this is based on, on the first two years, these are some preliminary forecasts, they aren't final numbers, but I don't expect they're going to change dramatically, is wards one, two, three, and four, which is consistent, and seven, which is consistent with the first two years, the first two-year experience.
I have Counselor Collins.
I'm going to ask it at the end of the presentation.
Okay. I did have a question, so I need to pass the chair on to Counselor Collins. I'm just wondering if there's foregone tax assessment benefits to the city coffers. When I get emails like I did yesterday, and I get these often, where on a real estate deal, they're showing a home at $2.2 million, paying $4,300 and whatever and change in taxes a year, and then I have a constituent in my ward in a $500,000 home that's paying $3,700 in taxes. And so there's a disproportionate amount of taxes appears on the face that that residential taxpayer is paying on the $500,000 home and on the $2.2 million home.
So, so through the chair, through the chair, I would say your choice of words is so appropriate is that it appears on the face. So we too receive these, these emails. I would suggest for the most part, the vast, vast majority of these relate to either a new build or a tear down. And when you have a tear down, what IMPACT does is assesses that project in the various stages of that project. And so during the tear down, it is assessed as a vacant lot. And then it is developed and put on the market with the property taxes, it's marketed with the property taxes of a vacant lot. When that property transacts, it is going to be reflected as now the value of not only the land, but of having a facility, a building on that land. So I would suggest that often those comparisons are comparing projects or properties that aren't like properties because the newer home is reflecting the assessed value of a vacant lot, not ultimately what that property will be assessed at.
So about. I have, in fact, done some investigation and some, some of these are long-lasting properties that have been under assessed, and I can give you a list of what we found already that are under assessed based on what their current real assessment value should be relative to the surrounding neighborhood. And yet their taxes are much significantly, and for the last 10 years, they've been paying a lot less than their comparators, even in their own neighborhood or beyond. So I guess my concern is how much revenue are we actually losing or offset that we're losing based on this phenomenon? Because I'm not sure if the assessment board or the, or the assessors are really current, but we can find dozens and dozens of properties that have high value or sold and never ever, the staff has never caught up what that value is, and are paying less taxes for that higher value than the average household would pay on the value of their homes. And there's a lot of those examples. So it doesn't appear to be one-off anymore. It appears to be a bit of a trend, and I believe that this foregone revenue, or certainly if it's not revenue, it's certainly a foregone relief to the balance of the community when people aren't paying their fair share on the value of their home.
So, so through the chair is, we do pursue the, where there may be a disparity or inequity with respect to values. It can happen. It's, again, it's based on market transactions, and if a neighborhood, there's very few transactions in it, then IMPACT is not necessarily capturing. You asked us to look at this, and we restructured our taxation area two years ago, and we created an additional position to actually go out and try to identify where there may be this disparities, these disparities, so they exist, and we do pursue them. And when we identify them, we draw attention to these properties to IMPACT, and IMPACT is quite good at getting out and reassessing it. So if the counselor has any that he would like us to look at, absolutely. We recognized it as an issue. We restructured, created a position specifically focused on trying to identify where there are these, these disparities. Are they going to continue to exist? Likely in areas where there are few transactions. If there are neighborhoods with mature residents who are content in their neighborhood and there isn't a lot of transactions or turnover, it causes a lack of data for IMPACT to draw from.
I think that's fair, and I just want to highlight, I have raised this before, and it continues to be something that I receive emails on. Those are my questions. I take the chair back. Anyone else? No? Okay. Go ahead, Mike.
I'll go first. So, so I described the two shifts, just to go a little further in terms of what's happening across the property classes as it relates to assessment and reassessment and provincial legislation and regulations. Our industrial tax threshold, and there's going to be a subsequent report on this, so I won't get into a lot of detail, is municipal, the province has set thresholds, ranges as it relates to fairness for taxation thresholds. Our industrial class is above that threshold, so they're considered a protected class, and we can, through provincial, through provincial approval, through amendments to the regulations, we have been able in past years to only pass on 50% of the levy budget increase onto those classes. So we expect that to be a continuation through, through this term of council. With respect to the previous provincial government, you may recall that given the increase in the valuations on multi-residential, the province of Ontario paused as it relates to reassessment impacts on residential and levy impacts to residential. And so what that means is the city of Hamilton and other municipalities in Ontario cannot pass on the reassessment impact increase to multi-residential or the levy increase. They're essentially considered a protected class. So just the impact of those two legislative requirements represents 0.2 of the 3.2%. So again, we are at 3.2% or a levy increase of about $31 million. To arrive at a 2% increase, a residential increase of 2% would require an additional $10 million in savings. And again, just in terms of scenarios or range, to arrive at a 1% residential increase, again, excluding the assessment, reassessment shifts, would represent a 18 and a half million dollar, or 18 and a half million dollars in savings. So just to give you some sense as to in order to move that figure to 3.2, what it would require in magnitude, program savings or efficiencies. And I'm going to just quickly go through the next number of slides because this will be coming before you in the new year. So beyond the 3.2%, what that does not include are issues that the previous council has referred to the 2019 budget process. And there are four items that were referred to the 2019 budget process, and if all four of those were approved, it would add an additional 0.03% onto the average residential tax impact. They represent approximately $240,000 in gross and $240,000 in net costs and an additional 1 and 1/2 FTE. You can see just quickly the breakdown of those four items. One of those items, staff are recommending, is in the midst of a pilot project, pilot period, and be deferred to 2020, and you'll see that in the slide. The other, I won't get into these quickly. The other one is just out of interest for some of the staff or counselors on the City Enrichment Fund going forward for any returning or new members. There was a change in commitment from one of the organizations to a number of the recipients, and that's the driving factor to that figure. Over and above the four council-referred, and again, there will be, there is a comprehensive description of these in your budget books, and they will be coming back to a future budget discussion. In addition to the council-referred, our recommendations from staff for committee and councils' consideration, and there are business cases, 12 business cases that represent an additional 1 point, just short of 1.7 million dollars gross, net is 563,000. There may be some user fees, there could be funding from other levels of government that reduces the overall gross impact. It represents an additional 10.4 FTEs. If all approved, that too would add an additional 0.1% to the 3.2%. So again, you're not being asked to consider these today. These are coming forward to you throughout the budget process. You can see the breakdown of these positions. Again, some of these have gross impacts but have no net impacts in that there are recoveries, either fees or charges, but there are complement impacts. So again, these will all be coming before you through, through subsequent deliberations. Very quickly is, again, we started our multi-year budget process off in 2018. We're continuing with the multi-year budgets. I won't repeat this slide. The value of the multi-year budgets, it really does provide council an opportunity to see how your priorities are reflected in the next four years as it relates to the budget process. You heard from Brian as he presented, the rate budget is, we're quite effective at forecasting out one year, and we're improving in terms of our years two through four in terms of the forecast. But it really gives you a sense, council a sense and the community a sense, as to what those priorities are and how are they reflected as it relates to future budget and tax commitments. So again, I won't go through, through all the narrative in terms of the pros of the multi-budget process, but again, what I'm starting to see is a greater focus on appreciating what is, what we're expecting going forward and less of a focus on the current day. And so I would suggest that is providing some benefit, and I would suggest in part is the companion reports that are before you today as part of your agenda, is leading through, this budget process is leading to the realization of some of those issues. So whether it is the shoreline issues in part around climate variability, climate change, storm events, whether it is our major infrastructure assets such as our entertainment district, it is forcing us now to look forward, cast forward and get a better appreciation as to not only what our opportunities are, what are our risks and liabilities going forward.
Mike, for clarity, Counselor Collins.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, and through you to Mike. Mike, the, I read with interest this morning, the Labor Relations Act changes that the provincial government is proposing to designate municipalities as a non-construction employer, and I, and I wonder what impact that will have in terms of the projections that you have for multi-years. So I know we've had past reports here, we've all, we all have examples in terms of projects where we believe that costs have been inflated as it relates to some of the rules and regulations that we're, we are bound to follow, knowing that some of those rules and regulations may be undone in the next couple, couple of months. I'm just wondering then how that is incorporated then into our budget books because, you know, we're not talking about a couple hundred thousand, we're talking about millions, if not tens of millions, depending on what projects we're looking at. So I know it's early days and early stages, but are staff giving some thought through you, Mr. Chairman, to what's on the horizon as it relates to provincial changes in that regard?
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, it is new, and it was new to us as well. Just last night, we were trying to get a better appreciation as to what is being proposed, which we, we expect may actually be approved maybe in the first quarter of 2019. In terms of, of impacts, again, I think the, the council has categorized it correctly as, if there are benefits, they will be future, future-year benefits. If, for instance, we've entered into a contract, I'm thinking of the wastewater treatment plant, we might have already entered into a contract for a multi-phase that does not allow the municipality now to go back out and cast out, and nor would we recommend doing that. So there may be opportunities going forward. I think of, of a recent announcement that was cast out to all of council around Greensville. We had some challenges with respect to that community hub as it relates to a funding challenge. Effectively, I believe the school board component of that project was coming in 37% over budget and had only three bidders, and so they, they weren't necessarily getting that competitive vigor through the process as being part of a joint project. So I would suggest there may be opportunities as to whether that represents a 2% to 10% efficiency. I don't quite know yet, but I think the counselor's correct. It will be future. Obviously, it's not reflected in your budget documents today. If there are opportunities, those will be likely 2020, maybe late 2019 contracts just because of the timing. If we are tendering for something, it would have to be tendered in the middle, middle of 2019 to capture that potential change in regulation, subject to the ultimate approval of it.
Can I ask then, knowing what's on the horizon, can I ask that information be prepared to the multi-budget year steering committee at some point in time in terms of a report that summarizes those changes and the anticipated possible cost savings that would come as a result of, of the legislative revisions?
Sure. Okay. Counselor. Counselor Murillo?
Just on that issue, if you, through you, Mr. Chairman, Mike, I think it's important that if you verbalize today what that signatory issue actually means and how it was, how it actually came to, to be. So for the new members particularly, it'd be greatly appreciated.
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I see Laura in the audience, and I think Laura will do a far more effective job than I will in terms of describing what happened, I think, since 2007 as it relates to, to the carpentry. And, and just before Laura starts, for the benefit of all, all committee is, our legal services is coordinating an information report as it relates to this issue, so you will get subsequent information as well as to what the proposed change is in regulation.
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, this matter.
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, this matter, when we became certified by the carpenters' union dates back to, I believe, approximately 2007, and it was a, an unfortunate situation in that the certification information from the board was sent to a different location. By the time we were aware of the documentation, the board had already certified the members. I believe it was, this predates me as well, I believe it was sent to 330 Wentworth, and unbeknownst to us, the board held the, the certification vote, and there are only five individuals, carpenters, that were working for us through, I believe, an agency that we only needed three of them to, to sign. In any event, they certified, the board issued two certificates, as I recall, one for the ICI, industrial, commercial, and institutional, and one for all other sectors. We were, we were bound to the ICI. When I arrived, we negotiated some amendments to the ICI collective agreement with the carpenters, and then we did not sign for residential. We had some obligations, and then we refused to, to sign with them. So currently, our obligations with them are, are for the industrial, commercial, institutional, which includes the, the work at the water treatment plant and other, and other areas. With this change to the Labor Relations Act, being deemed as, municipalities being deemed as non-construction employers, would mean that it would absolve the city of Hamilton from any obligations to the carpenters' union. So as the amendments are written, and barring no changes, and it receives, I believe, second and third reading, and then subsequently royal assent, then we'll no longer have those obligations to the carpenters' union. Having said that, we have contracts that probably incorporate obligations to those general contractors already, those would, I suspect, remain intact, but on a go-forward basis, we would not have to consider the carpenters' union or having currently a consideration for the general contractors to be a signatory to the carpenters' union on a go-forward basis.
Thank you. Councillor Whitehead for clarity.
Well, on, on that, because I appreciate the history, but there's the, the other bill, unfortunately, I didn't, I wouldn't support, but it does have implications, and that is Bill 47. And I'm trying to understand, because we, we actually, because that's the Bill 148, the, the, when government came in, and then we talked about the cost impacts at the seat of Hamilton on an annualized basis and started building those costs in. Now you have Bill 40, I believe it's 47, that passed, that foregoes some of those responsibilities, but I've never heard how it impacts on our, our budget relative to the accommodations we made for Bill 148.
Good question. Relevant?
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and we'll confirm these figure, figures, but as part of our 2018 budget process, so again, this is the minimum wage bill, is we made adjustments in 2018 for a series of factors. One was the, the change in minimum wage, and I believe it was just over $600,000. That would have, and had, did impact us in 2018. The avoidance, what I'll describe as a cost avoidance, just, just from a financial, is given that the obligation is not to move to $15 in January, that represents a cost avoidance of about $260,000 for us in 2019. The other adjustment we made in 2018 was we heard from a number of contractors and vendors as it relates to their challenges to retain their labor force, and so you approved a $600,000 allowance for that. I don't believe that we've had to leverage that, so that will come forward as part of our deliberations as a potential savings starting in 2019. On the two personal emergency leave days, we have not budgeted for the two personal emergency leave days. I suspect you will see through our year-end variance report that there was some uptake on the two paid personal emergency leave days, but as that too was ended going forward, that does not represent a pressure for us in 2019.
Laura, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, yes.
Because I think there was other untangibles, Mr. Chair, that were beyond just the salary that was identified for Laura in the past in regards to, we hadn't been able to actually quantify those financial impacts and, you know, there's amongst our part-time workers, et cetera. So can you, is there other things that may be impacted by the change?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, we're just in the midst of preparing a communication for council, and I think within the next week, week to 10 days, you'll receive a comprehensive summary of Bill 147 that essentially repeals Bill 148. So it's the minimum wage, it's the personal emergency leave days, it's the leaves of absences, there's, there's a whole host of areas where Bill 47 makes, makes wholesome changes and, and withdrawals, essentially all the entitlements that were provided for under Bill 148. Some of the financial implications, I think, need to still be worked through, but we're going to be providing council and SLT and the organization with a, a fulsome understanding of what exactly Bill, Bill 47 says and the implications to the organization.
Thank you. That is pending. Councillor Ferguson?
Yeah, thank you. I was going to bring up two issues. Number one is the, the most expensive item I recall last year, Mike and Laura, was the two personal leave days and having to backstop them. You had to bring paramedics, firefighters, nurses, police in, off of, in overtime to cover for those two spots, and we built that into the budget because you're going to need them. And now there should be a substantial credit. I recall it was over a million dollars, Mike, the total cost of the backstopping would be, and you should see a reduction in the 2019 credit as a result of that. Do you not agree?
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I partially agree. It will be a savings. I'm recalling a different figure. I thought it was, I thought it was around $600,000, but we'll confirm the figure because I believe we had asked for the full two, and council said, let's, let's evaluate based on the experience, so I think we phased it in, but that, we'll, we'll confirm that figure. I believe it is $600,000 with respect to that issue, and I would say an additional $600,000 because there were a number of vendors, as the council, council will recall, who came forward and suggested that they required additional compensation to their contractual arrangements, and for the most part, departments were able to absorb that and didn't require the 600.
Okay, because this, this is an issue I've had for a number of years where if they're savings, we never see a slide go up there, particularly around energy. You put up this slide in the May, the $15 million we're saving in energy costs, because, but you never see a net minus sign going up on the screen, you know, and, you know, the best one is the 15,000 streetlights going to LED and all the massive savings per possibility. But I always tease Dan, I never see that come up on the screen, the savings, all I see is where you want more. And, and so we're going to keep questioning that, I think, Mike. And on, and, you know, I've got to give credit to former councillor, now MPP Skelly, on the non-construction employer initiative. I've been working with her for a few months on that now, and it appeared in the omnibus bill yesterday, she texted me right away as soon as it became public. I've got it now, the copy of the omnibus bill, there's a slew of changes. One of them is that the mush sector is going to be exempt or determined as non-construction employers. But I think, Laura, you would agree, that doesn't affect roads and heavy construction because that's done by labors, not carpenters, but it does affect all the ICI and parks because parks have trails with wood on them and they have the gazebos, so it affects those two sectors, spray pads. I know that was her, her poster child, was the spray pad in Ward 7, coming so high because it had to be done with only signatory contractors. This is going to help us significantly because now non-union, Merit, and CLAC contractors can come back and start bidding on our projects. And I just want everybody to agree, the more competition you have, the lower the price will be. And, and, and so that is great news for Hamilton, that, that came out yesterday about the non-construction employer, because as I understand it, Laura, we have no carpenters on staff now. Laura, it's, it's a subcontract clause that's in that collective agreement that hooks us.
So to you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, yes, you're exactly right, and it's always been that case, we've never had carpenters per se. So the, the obligations were always to the ICI originally, early days, we had obligations to the ICI, heavy engineering and residential, and because the board had said ICI in any other sector, we never needed to negotiate agreements with the carpenters for residential and heavy engineering, and then we eventually withdrew any, any interest in, in having that agreement with them. But to date, it's only ICI, and it's still significant.
Because it's an omnibus bill, I, I did ask Donnie yesterday, so when will this be finished, and her answer was February. Now, this tough journey takes longer than what it should, but that's better than six months that I was thinking it typically takes to go through three readings and get royal assent. But I don't know whether we can take a risk and, and start bidding contracts shortly and open it up to everyone, because if you agree, you just go to the board and say, hey, legislation's been changed and the work hasn't started yet because the tender hasn't been awarded, I don't know, that may be a stretch. Or maybe we need a response from purchasing, what do you have that's going out for bid that's ICI that we could delay for two months in tendering it, and to allow this to open up, we could take advantage of any of the potential savings. Because there was a report that came to council, and it's so hard to quantify because you don't know what somebody else would have bid, but the report to council was eight to $10 million in annual savings that we would enjoy as a result of, of opening up and getting more competition from those non-union ICI, or non-union CLAC and Merit contractors.
Are you asking for staff's opinion on those two options you've, one wait on bids, the other bid early and hope for the best?
I'll be asking more questions on rules, I don't think it needs a motion yet. I talked to Tina yesterday, and, you know, I have a big one in Ancaster, it's, it's on the street now, it's supposed to close December 15th, maybe defer that now until after this comes into force and effect. So I'm already on that part, Mr. Chair, and I suspect purchasing will be reporting back shortly through the procurement subcommittee and ultimately to AFNA on that very issue.
Okay, thank you, councillor. And finally on this, for clarity, councillor Marula?
Well, Mr. Chairman, since we're on, on a topic of old subjects, it's my understanding you're turning 55 this weekend, I just wanted to say happy birthday.
Mike, carry on.
So on that note, we have a seniors' tax deferral program. So this really, I just, just in terms of four-year, just for the benefit of new councillors and returning councillor, is the four-year budget process is not aligned to this term of council, it's a rolling four-year budget process. So this year, it's a four-year budget process capturing the period 2019 to 21, and next, or 22, next year that gets pushed out a year. So it's a four-year rolling budget process, and so that gives an opportunity for the community and for council to better appreciate what the financial commitments are as it relates to priorities that you're moving forward. So based on our ability to cast forward is, again, this slide is, is just at a very high level, providing you a sense, sense as to what we see going forward as it relates to pressures, so city departments as well as boards and agencies, and I would just caveat the boards and agencies, again, based on historical, and our capital financing, and you'll see a change in the capital financing because you will see a change in our recommendations as it relates to the capital financing for our 10-year capital budget starting in 2019. So that's captured in that number. So again, in terms of the overall increase, you can see it ranges from 37 million to 39 million year over year, about that, 3.8 to 4.4%, and in terms of residential increases, 3.3 to 3.9. As Brian mentioned during the rate budget presentation yesterday, is we have greater confidence in the upcoming year, we're still developing our skill sets as it relates to future years. But just to give you a sense as to the, the three years beyond 2019, what we see as it relates to opportunities and pressures at a very high level.
Councillor Clark?
Just on the 10-year transit plan, I'm curious about capital financing there. I understand that we got funding from the feds in the province, they don't actually work on a 10-year plan, they work on a more current plan, and there'd be an expectation that we would be finding the 137 million somewhere, and then we would phase it in, so...
So can I, can I ask if we can park it to my next presentation on capital? So, so what the council is identifying is our 10-year transit forecast makes assumptions with respect to the funding partnership available to us through the federal and provincial governments, it's the Public Transit Infrastructure Fund. They had committed a maximum of $511 million to the city of Hamilton, to which the province shares 33%, and the city has to contribute 27%, and I think it's somewhere in that 137, 140 million dollars that we had not incorporated in last year's 10-year budget forecast. So you're going to see, I have some specific slides to that issue, so if I can ask if we can park that to the next presentation, which is the capital budget presentation.
Please.
So just in terms of the outlook going forward, the transit strategy, as in 2019 continues to be one of the driving factors to our, to the changes, increases to the four-year period, operating impacts from capital, we've had a lot of conversation around operating impacts from capital, that's going to continue to be a factor as we invest in new facilities and new assets, that's going to require not only complement staffing, but have some operating dollar impacts as well. And the, as I mentioned, the, a projected increase in capital financing, and you'll see, there's two principal factors to that, it's the transit strategy and our West Harbor project are two factors that are contributing to staff's recommendation to increase our capital financing, starting as early as 2019, a small increase, point 0.2 on transit, but really ramping up in 2020 to 22. So just in terms of some factors, and in terms of the, the horizon looking forward, dates, so again, we started today when we were trying to, to build some time in for Brett to join us. Again, is, we'll be back before you on the tax capital on the 14th, and the rate budget, I believe, again, that we won't require the GIC on the 13th, so it'll come to council on the 19th. We will work with clerks with respect to a date in January, and I know Stephanie's already put her mind, to looking for a date for the capital GIC in January, and I'll pause there.
It's confirmed and should be in most of your calendars now for January 21st.
And I've mentioned previously to, for the benefit of the new councillors, are the departments present their departmental budgets, and you can see that is January 18th through to February 8th. We've discussed transit and our transit day, and so while some of the information that was requested today, we will look at a sooner date, but some of that may be, be repeated or brought forward on January 25th. We continue with our budget deliberations, I made reference in today's presentation to council referred items, business cases, those will come back during these budget deliberation dates, and we, and the schedule approved by council has us bringing the final budgets to council on March 27th. So just, just as a check into the budget schedule, that's just a reminder where we are and the path forward.
What is preventing us from, since we now know the tax capital on December 14th is required, and we also know that the rate budget December 13th is no longer required, what prevents us from moving our tax capital to December 13th, leaving the 14th available to us? Can we move that? Is that going to hurt your staffing needs or anything like that, or clerk, is there any problem with that?
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I'm going to focus it on procedurally, what clerks would have to do to amend the schedule.
I could certainly amend the schedule, there is an ad, but the ad did state that meetings are subject to change, so we can move what needed to be moved.
Sir, colleagues, or am I complicating things? Would you rather meet next Friday or next Thursday on the tax capital? Councillor Clark?
I, I have been setting up meetings with a number of department heads and staff to be, have a lot of questions answered, so I'd rather have those questions answered privately than in a public meeting, I can get them done quickly, then we won't have a longer meeting here.
So don't mess with it. We'll meet next Friday for capital part two. Okay, thank you. And we don't have any question, oh, we have one, mayor, or a comment or a question, mayor.
Just so on the same note, I mean, I think there's every reason, we don't have to wait till the budget date. to wait till the budget date to ask questions of, of the packages that are there. So in light of what you're doing and what others could do in terms of getting briefed and, you know, giving a lot of answers to the questions you might have, you don't have to wait for the budget date. You can do them anytime. Mike, he'll be available to anyone that, that wants to sit down and get, you know, a more detailed overview, especially for the new members and, you know, you're following a lot of information. I think it'd be worth your while to sit down on a one-on-one basis and, and, you know, just get as much clarity as you need rather than a missetting, which is a little bit more, more awkward to try and achieve unless you want to make a public, public statement, of course. So I would, I would recommend that. And I did hear some discussion, it's just a brief aside on the non-construction employer issue, which I think Counselor Skelly informed me about as well, which is a, an important initiative. I don't know what else is in the bill that might be good or bad, but on that one issue, it's particularly positive and I'm, I'm in line with what Counselor Ferguson said a minute ago. I mean, we should be looking at any of our contractual issues that were out there, you know, RFP right now and possibly delaying them, including, you know, Greensville, you know, bid that's been out there that the school board's been struggling with, with in partnership with the city, because we, we could very well benefit, you know, get a, get a better, you know, quote this time if, if they broaden out the, the, the bidders that can actually apply and, and make this happen. So I think it'd be worth our while to have a good, hard look at what doesn't have to go out right now and we can wait until the legislation is passed if we can. Just calling.
Okay, thank you.
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, as I understand it, there have been one-on-one meetings where staff have organized one-on-one meetings to, to just educate counselors with respect to the budget documents and that is available to you on a go-forward basis. If you require additional meetings, please reach out to staff. We're more than happy to sit down with you through the budget process and help you to navigate through the documents and the discussions and deliberations. And with respect to, as, as the mayor's identified, there were a number of issues that were identified as staff are looking at all those issues, whether they are assessment issues, whether they're planning issues. And so we'll review all of those issues and come back with information.
Counselor Ferguson?
Yeah, just on the, and I may look for a staff comment on this, I mean, yes, the mayor just talked about, I could tell you as a contractor, did work for thirty-two years, you get your sharpest pencil out in December and January because you want to get the backlog built up before the next construction season starts. It's absolutely critical you get your key employees back early, otherwise they'll jump to another contractor. And so by deferring that, you're going to run the risk of losing that advantage. In a perfect world, we would hear, and, and I would like to hear from Nicole on this. I suspect as a lawyer, she'll want to be very cautious, but can we put them up, can we open them up anyway because this is coming and take the risk of what happens on agreements? I'd like to hear from Nicole on that. Obviously, she's not in the room today, but it'd be nice to have the best of both worlds. Get it tendered early because you get the advantage of the contractors being hungrier.